I'm just, I'm just asking.
Okay, at four after seven, I'd like to call the Land and Planning Board meeting for water. Just have the vote called please.
Tom McKeon.
Marty Kane.
Bob Coon.
Roger Moran.
Ted, what's your opinion?
And our board secretary.
On the agenda this evening, we have minutes, a reading of the minutes, approval of minutes of May first and April seventeenth. After that, any public comments on, unscheduled, on the agenda. Is that okay with you and the planning? Then after that, we'll have a public hearing on AIM recycling. Second public hearing will be on Kate's butter. Then we have item two pending applications, AIM recycling. Item two will be Kate's butter. Item three, Southern Main Marine. On the new applications, Lovejoy subdivision. Item two on the new applications is Wears, Moses Sales, Revision of Approved, Conditional Use Permit. Then the plan is recorded. Start with the approval of the minutes of April seventeenth. Does everybody have a chance to read them, review them? Any comments?
Move to approve.
Yeah?
Yes. Go ahead. You were here on the seventeenth.
You were on the seventeenth.
I have it here in front of me.
Yeah, I got it right here too. We kill that now?
I thought I had it, I didn't look at it.
Okay. Do you have a second, so stable?
I second, we have a second.
We don't know, we can do that.
Okay, minutes of May first.
Move to approve. Let me get a chance to read it.
So if you didn't read them?
Is there a second on that?
Yeah.
Everybody have any comment? Marty's reviewing this. Okay, will that now be?
I just want to see it on the vote.
Yeah, it's accurate, Marty.
I voted no.
Yes, I know. It's nobody here.
All right, that's all, you want to go?
All those in favor?
Yeah.
I suppose. Okay, public hearing on AIM Recycling USA Conditional Use Application. Sorry. Is there anyone here that has any comments on non-agenda items?
Non-agenda items?
Right. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to speak about the planned changes on Route one, on the DB one and DB two.
Could you just state your name, Mr. Fritz?
Yeah, Richard Fritz, Fritz Estai on Route one in Arundel. And there's some changes that have been made to my parcel of land that need to be resolved. I'd like to have that addressed. I don't want to call anybody else that's here to deal with an issue that came here directly for that. I want it on record that there needs to be some changes made. And I'd like to get together with you, Ted, and a date approved by you, where we can go over this and see if we can get this resolved.
The only thing I would say to you, Mr. Fritz, is that, that, those changes are going to public hearing. The best time to do that is at that public hearing, which is on the twenty-second.
Now, there is some issues that was agreed to by the board about not changing my land, and it has been changed, and it needs to be addressed. Because I've got a current map showing the changes that are being made, and it's not what everybody agreed upon.
Well, it sounds like that's something the board has to hear. I can't make a decision for the board, but certainly, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, but the board, only the board can make such decisions.
Well, it was agreed upon by the board, that my location, the line for, the new changes proposed was going to start on the northern side of my line, not the southern side. And my land now has been moved into a different zone than what was agreed upon, so, and I don't know where we go from here, but somehow we need to get it resolved.
Okay, well, certainly, you'd be welcome to come and talk to me about it, but the best time to deal with that would be with the board, because they, they can't deal with it tonight, because it's not an agenda item.
I understand that, and I, just bringing it up now, because there was a couple of things that was agreed upon, that is now not currently being done, and somehow it needs to be resolved.
Okay, well, why don't you and I meet next week, and you can bring it, certainly bring it to the board's attention at Arundel meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay. Can I have that time?
Certainly.
Yeah, if you can, when you guys have your discussion, have, if you know what night it was that the board said they approved something or voted on something, so that we can review the minutes, have that available for Ted. I'm not sure that I have the exact night. I usually take people at face value when they're going to say they're going to do something. Why didn't run home and make a note of it? Because, but it's got to be in the records, and I'm sure some of the board members will remember what was discussed.
Two thousand and seven maybe.
And I have no problem with me with the board and Ted, because there was board members that were, are still on the board, that at that time said, okay. And the way it's going right now, it's just not what was agreed upon.
Can you give me an idea, so we can go back through the minutes? What, that was this year, or was that in two thousand and thirteen?
No, it was, when they first decided to change the zoning, I guess I was moved into CCS. Nobody told me of that, that I had been changed, when it was agreed upon that I was going to stay in B one, or BI. And also, I brought up the fact that I had a junkyard license, even though I couldn't have junk cars, because of my tire recycling business, and it was agreed upon that I could still continue doing that. And with the changes that are being made, none of that is going to happen. So those are two items that were agreed upon at that time, at the meetings, that is now currently being changed.
Okay, well, so you think it might be to last year?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven was one of them. And the other one was just last year, I believe.
Well, if you can look at two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and seven, I, obviously, I can't.
Well, like I said, if people still on the board, they'll remember, I'm sure, and came to this. So I, yeah, I'm very concerned with it.
Yes, I do remember, Mr. Fritz was talking about the junkyard stuff, I do remember that discussion on the board, I think I was on the board at the time of that discussion.
You were there.
There was a discussion on the junkyards and him, and so, I don't exactly remember, I do remember that discussion.
And also, the reason he had to have the junkyard permit, or the only reason is, because it wasn't scrap metal or anything else, he had rims, and that's part of a vehicle, and that was the only reason why he needed the license. At the time, it was a laughing stock of the state that I had a junkyard license, but I couldn't have junk cars. But because tires are on rims, they considered it part of a car, so they made me get a junkyard license, in order to be able to run my tire recycling business. Basically, what I wanted, I want my land left in the B one zone, and not where it's headed right now, or BI. That was agreed upon, and it's not true. I got right across the street from me, it's the St. Lons, they're not included in this new zoning, and I am. Doesn't make much sense. That my land, all of a sudden, has moved into a different zone.
Okay, look at that. You're the last property in, in that zone.
Yeah, well, that's the way it is now.
Okay.
And it should have been left where it was. When I, when I first moved into Arundel, yeah, the HC, well, there was no zoning to begin with when I came in first. Then I went to the HC, and I was in the HC. The reason that I built my house where I did was because it was in residential. The reason my stepson built his house where he did was because it was in residential, and now it's been, that house, the houses have been moved into B one, BI. And my property is now going to be in a B two and B one. I have two different, two different zones now, if I would map, the B one, BD one, and BD two, splitting my land up. I mean, it's just a mess. And it's not what was agreed upon at the meetings.
We'll take a look at that, we'll meet next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to have to move the public hearing on Kate's butter. Yeah?
So you might as well start with me.
Okay, let's, any one here from the public to discuss AIM recycling? No? I'll close the public hearing on that. Skip to pending applications. AIM Recycling USA Conditional Use Application, proposed application to renew expired permit to continue operation of existing 43,000 square foot solid waste recycling facility on 22.9 acre site located at 224, 2244 Paul and Road, tax map twelve, lot nine, in the BI district. AIM Recycling USA is the owner, applicant, and Gerard Jacobs is the applicant's agent. All requirements have been met. The FOF was written last time as is attached under separate cover. Gerard, you got my, you got my email today, right? What does the board want to do about the, you know, the closure bond?
What, about the what?
The closure bond.
Well, I'm surprised that we hadn't required it in the past, never part of it, anyway. The intent of this is in case they go.
Elliot.
Or Elliot.
And there'd be some.
It's like we can tell the communications tower, where the tower, we have bonded, in case, in case the facility fails and the material is left there, it provides an escrow amount for the, for the cleanup of that facility. So that would be the town's problem, probably a state problem, actually.
So if we didn't have the bond, something does go wrong, the town will tax pay us, we'd have to foot the bill.
No, not necessarily, no. I, I don't think they would foot the bill. It would be, it would be persistent bond, if you have bonders or legitimate reason to, I mean, the town could use that money to hire somebody to.
If there was a bond.
If there was, if there was no bond, then it would be an enforcement action, or it would be something that would be taken on by DEP solid waste.
Yeah, and DEP accepted, accepted the financial assurance AIM segment for their solid, for their state funding.
Right.
So, okay. So there's a layer of protection to the town, to DEP?
Well, there, well, there's no revenge, if AIM were to, the whole reason you have that ordinance is if AIM, if any facility were to fail, that there would be some money there to deal with immediate cleanup problems, that's all. The issue is, and we discussed it very, 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 very early on, and decided that wasn't really important, but it's just a decision the board's going to make, it's not something I put in. And several ordinance have mentioned this to me, so I wanted to.
I don't remember anything.
We discussed that, yeah.
I'm just wasting my opinion, I don't remember. Because we were trying, I'm trying to get all the other stuff in, in line, current, and I don't remember ever that being discussed. Or if somebody else can refresh my memory, I don't, like I said, I don't remember. I'm not sure I remember the, the whole cost, but I would like to hear from me. You mentioned the state being satisfied with the performance guarantees that you've given to the state.
Yeah.
So I'd like to expand on that a little bit, because the board does have some latitude, should we feel that, and we have substantiated information that all is, all is basically wrong.
Yeah, what the state asks for is financial ability submissions to, so what we submitted to the state were cost reports and revenue reports from the last two years, just to show the financial shape of the yard. And that's what we did for all five of their sites in Maine. And so the state accepted that as, as sufficient proof of financial ability to operate the facility and to put up the closure costs, if, if the facilities were to close. And I actually, I brought copies of those tonight, if you board members would like to see that.
And what is a bond? What is closure cost?
Well.
What is maintenance of the property?
Yeah.
Well, no, it's, it's not maintenance, it's, it's no different than with a gravel pit.
Yeah, in two thousand and seven, the state estimated it less than $200,000. So that, that's, that's what, that's what stated in the license that was granted to one steel, or in Smorgren back in two thousand and seven. And so when we applied to transfer the license, the state didn't acquire anything above just the, the revenue reports.
Is that per site, or is that all of them?
Well, what, we submitted revenue reports for each site, so, individually. But the state also looked at the five as a whole, as well. And the parent company is also on the hook, and American Iron and Metal Company Inc. is an international recycling company. So they, they've also offered to submit a letter assuring the town that they will step in and pay closure costs if something were to happen. So we, we also would be willing to submit that, that guarantee from the parent company.
I think that, that is something that the minimum we should, should expect or require, just to have that letter. What my concern is, is that taxpayers don't get, they're going to bill you for a spill or something, go bankrupt all of a sudden, cleanup. So it sounded like the DEP just has already gone through some type of assurance process, bonding process. What, what makes me feel a little uncomfortable is we require a gravel pit to post a bond, and that is probably a much smaller impact if something went wrong, if it was left vacant. Something that could occur there, because there aren't a lot of, there's a lot of materials coming in and out of there. So I just want to make sure there's no liability to the town.
And their A ten G three, we're supposed to ask for some sort of, some sort of assurance.
So there was that letter of assurance, that, is that, was that qualified, or is that a bond? What was that, A ten G three?
A ten G four says that the requirements of section A ten G three may be waived if the board makes written findings that alternative performance guarantees, which the applicant just talked about, proposed by the applicant are adequate and appropriate to fill, fulfill the purpose of this order. And from my view, the purpose of the ordinance is to make sure that if the facility does close, that the material, and A ten G three does say that it goes to the ongoing maintenance of property, so that we can continue with the maintenance, upkeep, security, safety, and you guys even bring in radioactive stuff in there. So I, I would be comfortable with the letter.
Okay.
Saying that corporate would step in and pay the corporate on one, one person, I think that would, or A ten G four, that would meet the purposes of A ten G three. Question for you, that, when they said they submitted it for each site, but we don't know what they submitted for quote unquote, for this site.
Yeah, he offered, he offered to give you all of the finances for the last four or three.
Sure, so we have, not necessarily the board itself.
Yeah.
So we have it for record for, for the files and everything else. This is what I'm going, I'm not trying to say.
Right.
You know?
That was submitted to the town as well, because when we submit our application to DEP, we have to file a copy of that application with the town. So those materials were submitted to the town, just not, not as part of.
Publicized. They were publicized, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, they're, they're, for the record, like, you know I'm going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I guess they're not part of the planning board record, but they are.
They are part of the planning board record, it's just, yeah, they're just not disseminated to every member.
Okay.
I think you sent, you sent it to me.
Yeah, I did send it to Ted.
And I say, yeah, they're in compliance with their, with their DEP. If you guys want to get copies of them.
No, no, I'm just saying.
The DEP orders, they'll be happy to.
We don't need any more paper.
No, I, my papers don't whack enough.
Do you want to make that formal motion, Bob?
I'd like to make it that, yeah, that, well, we'll have to have a, we'll put it on as one of the conditions of approval. The board will have to vote on that later until, when we go down through the individual ones.
And the findings of facts.
I have to have, I have to have one in Georgia.
Okay. Okay?
Wait, wait, that comes up, a second there.
So that means we need to deem this complete?
Oh, you've already done that, you've done your public hearing, you deemed the application complete, renewed the application, you've entered sidewalk, and the other thing, we would have done this last time, had we had a court, we did not have. So all, all the requirements have been met, and you have a findings of facts in front of you, like, I'm in the last portion.
Oh, you're writing the last portion?
Um, what you just talked about.
Okay, so I can start. Let me go through the findings of facts. Findings of facts in motion for approval, Conditional Use Permit for American Iron and Metal LP Solid Waste Facility, 2244 Paul and Road. Whereas on December twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, your Land and Planning Board received a Conditional Use Application from One Steel Recycling to reinstate an expired Conditional Use Permit, continue operation of existing 43,000 plus square foot solid waste recycling facility on a 22.9 acre site located at 2244 Paul and Road, tax map twelve, lot nine, in the BI district. On December twelfth, the company was sold to American Iron and Metal LP, and the application was continued under the new corporate name. Whereas on the Arundel Planning Board conducted an advertised public sidewalk on the premises and came to the conclusion that, given the length of the permit expiration and the potential for changes on the site, the applicant was instructed to submit a new Conditional Use Application for the solid waste facility. Whereas on April tenth, two thousand and fourteen, your Land and Planning Board reviewed the new submissions and application to determine them to be complete. I don't need an extra B in there, I just grossed that off. Whereas on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, your Land and Planning Board conducted a public hearing on a proposed project. Whereas, your Land and Planning Board has arrived with the following findings of facts. Before you move it to a couple of things, on the second paragraph, whereas on the, I think we need a date.
We need a date, yeah.
Yeah, the date, I'm not sure what the date would be.
Well, we can look it up, it's in the documents.
And also, in the first paragraph, at the end of the second line, to reinstate an expired Conditional Use Permit, it should add the word to, to continue operation. That's all.
Didn't we just have the public hearing tonight?
Yes, we did, that's why.
So the dates, the date?
No, there was an initial one.
Correct, but that wasn't.
It wasn't held, or it's right, that's what I just corrected on that, too. As I said, I wrote this the last time, and can't really make any changes.
Correct the date.
So we just, we just changed the date to make it, okay. Findings of fact, the application, the applicant and owner of the property is American Iron and Metal LP. Two, the property is located at 2244 Paul Road, tax map twelve, lot nine, in the BI district. The property has been used for the past fifteen years as a solid waste recycling facility specializing in the collection, reduction, and exporting of recycled metals. As depicted on a proposed improvement map prepared by civil consultants and dated March nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the applicant proposes to re-permit the recycling facility to process the same types of metal materials that the facility has historically processed. In addition, the applicant proposes to install a ten by twenty scale house, a second vehicle weighing station, a RadCom detection unit, install ten parking spaces, reduce the driveway entrance to forty-two feet in width, and install a twenty-nine foot landscape aisle between Route one and the parking area. Five, all other recycling areas and collection points are to remain as shown on the existing conditions map prepared by civil consultants dated January first, January one, okay, should be January thirty-first or January first? You have both of them there.
That's fingers, three first.
So, January thirty-first?
Yes, it was thirty-first.
Okay, January thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. The drive, six, the driveway entrance maintains a site distance.
In excess.
Okay, in excess of six hundred feet to the north and to the south along Route one in performance with a minimum distances of a fifty mile an hour road, as specified in section seven point seven A of land use orders. Seven, the applicant has both current and active solid waste permit and stow mortar permit from the main department of fire and protection. All peak runoff will be detained on the site, and all runoff is collected and stow mortar given cause. Eight, water services provided by Kennybaum, Kennybaum Falls Water District from Route one mains, and onsite septic is provided by an onsite septic system. Nine, no new site lighting is proposed. Ten, the planning board has determined that existing vegetation with limits of cutting, as depicted on the existing conditions, the plan set will be sufficient to meet all landscaping and parking lock buffers and standards of the BI district to the side and to the rear of the properties, boundaries. The applicant has submitted the construction details sheet for all site work. Performance for Conditional Use Criteria, after due review and consideration, your Land and Planning Board has determined the application to be in performance for criteria of section nine point seven H of your Arundel land use orders as follows. Nine point seven H point one, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of use of neighboring properties. The use and the size of the structures, strictures are similar in scale and scope to surrounding properties and other land uses in the BI district. Move that, will you prove that with, the word should be structure? Right. Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
On the pulse. Nine point seven point eight two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan permits such use for the BI district as conditional uses, and therefore propose uses and performance with the two thousand and five comprehensive plan.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
So move. Nine point seven H three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate significant trip generation. The applicant's driveway site distance exceed the minimum standards of section seven point seven A, and the applicant has received an NDOT driveway opening permit for the proposed activity.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
I'd like to have this little discussion on that one.
Yeah.
Is it that the site isn't generating significant trip generation, or the proposed changes won't increase trip generation?
Proposed changes will not increase existing trip generations.
But I.
I'm sorry?
I forgot what it said.
Yeah, no. But the way it is, that's probably true as well.
Right, so the proposed use.
Yeah, but I'm comfortable with the way it's stated. If, unless you see something on the second, first three, third one, that's still that.
Okay. I need a vote on that.
I'd like to change this, the way Bob said it, it's more clear. So that would be that the.
The proposed.
Changes will not generate an increase in trip generation.
Okay.
Instead of proposed use, it should be proposed generation.
Okay. You get that?
Generate an increase.
Can you repeat that for me?
Yeah. Proposed change is will not generate an increase in trip generations.
Should we include significant, because do we know that it won't increase? Do you want to report on that?
Well, you didn't ask for, we didn't ask for a traffic impact study to see whether or not the additional waste station would generate any additional trip generation.
I can't see how or what.
Actually, it actually won't, because if anything else, it'll expedite, et cetera, and it will, uh, make it less possible of hanging out on roadside, because it's, the fact is, it's being expedited, it's more of a safety issue for use and speed.
So, maybe we should leave it the use and not the change. Yeah, the end use. So, well, either way, I'd go either way.
I like it the way Bob had it.
Okay.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion in a second, all in favor? What the change, okay. Nine point seven, eight point four, there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service to use. Existing onsite septic will be provided on site, and water is provided to the site by Kennybug, Kennybug Falls Wells Water District. The proposed use will not increase in advance for water or specific flow, septic flow on the property.
Will you approve?
Second discussion.
Yes. The discussion, the only thing is, I think, from now and for the future, here it should be noted, the distance of, of fire, fire hydrants or something like that, for clarity.
We think we're down on the applications from now on, because I know that's a major concern of yours and of fire chiefs, and I think that's something that would be very appropriate to be on, actually, the application form.
My business, I don't actually.
What's that?
So, for the purposes of this, it's going to remain the same?
Yeah.
The nearest hydrant is over at Enterprise Drive.
Correct.
It's on the same side, so we don't have to worry about crossing, crossing Route one with.
Correct, I mean, it's not on Enterprise Drive.
It's across the street, because there is nothing on Enterprise Drive.
No, you're right, thank you. No, it's across the street from Enterprise Drive, and is approximately three hundred to five hundred feet, probably a total of eight hundred feet into the facility.
I mean, within the thousand feet, there's a going, but I mean, for clarity, that's what I mean.
We will have to shut down, I'm sorry, I mean, we will have to shut down Route one, but that's, but I find.
What's that?
Hold on there. We didn't call them there.
Is, is there a motion?
There was a motion, second.
Okay, anyone more of all in favor?
Yes.
Unopposed, none. Okay, nine point seven, point eight, point five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties. In that noise, the nature of the business does generate noise from crushing and unloading of materials. Must be foreign materials?
Of, of materials.
Of materials, okay, of materials. However, the board finds that the use is and proposed sound levels are not unreasonable for the use of the district. Order, this use will not generate any order issues. Vibration and smoke, no vibration and smoke issues are generated on site. Glare. You're stuck here, you got the applicant. Nothing after that.
I'm pushing.
Oh, goodness.
Applicant is not proposing to add any additional lighting fixer, uh, any lighting, uh, resources on the site with this application.
The applicant is not proposing any additional lighting for this.
Yep.
Any additional lighting for this site. Have a vote on that?
I'll, I'll. Move, you'll sit there. I'll second, but I do want to, for the discussion, yeah. Who says why the glare can ever an issue?
Um, glare can be a serious issue whenever the lighting is not properly shielded, or the lighting is, the light source is actually pointed towards drivers, towards adjacent property owners, or towards adjacent residents. Glare can be a serious problem, and is one of the things that we're supposed to, to review as part of the conditional use application. There's some situations in which we've taken it very seriously, and that one of them, you may remember, was the Cape Urundale Golf Course, in which we had lighting facilities in very close proximity to residential homes, and so we had to do some serious, the applicant had to hire a lighting consultant in order to determine that there was, would be no impact from glare on adjacent residential projects. So, glare is something that is part of our consideration in any, any conditional use application.
It's never been declared before.
Yes. And I think it.
It's a little different.
Yeah. But it's something you usually, you'll find it in just about every single one of these today, because it's one of the things that's listed, as it says above, glare, it's one of the things that, that is cited in the conditional use ordinance. It says no dust, odor, vibration, smoke, and use, in some cases, the gas of glare, which is the lighting factor. That's all. Taking care of that, it's one of the nuisances that can be generated.
You're picking it up?
I don't want to vote.
I still, I still have, kind of, under, under noise, second sentence. However, the board finds that the use is and proposed sound levels. However, the board finds that this use in the B I district and the proposed sound levels are not unreasonable for the use of the district or in the.
Something. Punctuation.
Maybe get a little more.
I think it's that the use is and proposed sound levels are not. It's, it's.
There is something common there.
Okay, that'll be easier than, huh?
I'm not an English major, I'm not a.
Yeah, word right. Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
Unopposed. Nine, seven, eight, six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetation cover are suitable for the proposed use. The applicant proposes no additional site modifications that would impact the existing slope and drainage conditions on site.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second, yeah.
Anyone want to vote, all in favor?
Yeah.
Unopposed. Nine, seven, eight, seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No news, no nuisance will be generated by the proposed use.
Motion to approve.
Second that. All in favor?
Yeah.
Unopposed. Nine, seven, eight, eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this audit, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent proportions of the Urundale Land Use Orders and the design and proposal activities, proposed activities.
Motion to approve.
Second, but. Okay, all for discussion?
Yeah, is, is this where it's, 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 mentions performance standards? Is this where we, um, should, were we going to add that?
We're going to add that in, yeah.
Would be. No, it would be, I would say, it would be in the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Unless you want to make a reference to it, that the applicant's provided financial and technical, um, evidence of financial and technical capability to do the project.
How, how is it usually worded? Do we all in, uh?
Like that? Well, but I mean, because of the bond issue, you could put it in there, because that is another pertinent, that is a, that is another pertinent element. This is a catch-all phrase, basically, for anything in the performance standard.
It wouldn't hurt to have it in there, maybe supply that to us, though, this might be a good place just to state. Yeah, should we reference? Eight, ten, G?
Just, maybe make some of that up here? Will, will. That was, what again? Eight, ten, G?
Three.
G three? Okay, if I may, in.
Go ahead.
All right. I would preference that by saying the applicant has demonstrated financial and technical cap, uh, capacity to operate and close the facility, and therefore, some performance for section eight, ten, G, G three. Then the applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Urundale Land Use Orders and the design of proposed activities.
I agree. All in favor of that, of the change?
Yeah.
Unopposed. Tim?
I second on it?
Yeah. Tim?
You.
Well, you proposed, and you didn't second.
Marty, you with a second on that motion.
Was I? Done with.
We have too many meetings right now.
I agree with you.
Therefore, be resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, your under planning board hereby approves the conditional use application of the American Iron and Metal L P to operate a solid waste facility as herein presented contingent upon the following. One, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the approved improvements until the letter is presented to the code enforcement officer and town planner by the design engineers certified that all improvements have been installed in accordance with the approved plan. Two, all site improvements approved in this planning board action shall be substantially completed within two years of the approval date, otherwise this approval shall be deemed null and void. Any change from the approved plan shall require a supplemental of revised plan to the board.
I didn't add number four.
Yeah, this is, gentlemen, I gave them, didn't I give that to you, Marsha? I gave you those, the two things I just wrote. You got too many of these, fill that one out.
Mr. Chairman.
Right, that one and then number five.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
What?
Question. It says no occupancy permit, that, that's still existing and is still operating.
For the use of the facility, they still have to give a building permit for putting in the, uh, for putting in the, uh, waste station.
Yeah, but it says there's no occupancy permit, they're still operating.
True.
And you can't operate without an occupancy permit.
No, no, it just says for the approved improvements.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you read on, it says, shall be issued for the approved improvements. Has nothing to do with the existing building, so I think it was set there. Well, does everybody agree with that?
You agree.
Okay, number four, the applicant shall submit a letter from the A I M management assuring complete site cleanup and restoration of the site in the event of the facility's closure. Five, this permit expires on May eighth, two thousand seventeen, and must be renewed prior to the permit expiration. So approved by the Urundale Planning Board, there's twenty.
Eight.
Uh, can't be, it's got to be.
Today's the eighth.
Day of May.
It's big.
Yes, that's. But you got twenty-fourth of April here.
Right.
Is it last time? That's whatever, last time. It's eighth day of May, two thousand fourteen. How do we vote?
Yeah.
Do we, do we have a motion to, to accept the whole thing?
Right.
To a football.
The findings of fact, the findings of fact, and the conditions of.
With the conditions. You second that?
I'll second.
Okay, it'd be my motion to second. Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Unopposed? So pass.
Wasn't here for.
For the record, we should also indicate that.
Washington, so I need to give that, that copy to him.
You want the one with the U in it, or the? Okay. Um, next item, which is taken out of, uh, order.
Thank you.
Will be, uh.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Public hearing on Kate's Butter. Uh, Kate's Butter Cow Barn, conditional use application proposal, through the circus seven, six thousand one hundred and seventy square foot dairy barn and hay barn on the site of Kate's Homemade Butter Agro Club Demonstrated Facility on a thirty-seven point eight-two acre posse located at eight fifty-two Urundale Road, tax map five, lot nine, in the R four district. Daniel and Karen Patrick are the owners, and Lucas Patrick and Allison and Larry are the applicants. Anyone here from the public to review this application? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Let's see. What time, sir?
At, uh, seven fifty-five. Okay, so we're right pending applications. You have to review yourself, you know?
Are you going in Kate's Butter?
Yeah, yeah. I do. Okay, conditional use application, Kate's Butter Cow Barn, conditional use application proposed, proposals to construct a six thousand four hundred and seventy-six square foot dairy barn and hay barn on the site of Kate's Homemade Butter Agro Club Demonstrated Facility on a thirty-seven point eight-two acre posse located at eight fifty-two Urundale Road, tax map five, lot nine, in the R four district. Daniel and Karen Patrick are the owners, and Lucas Patrick and Allison and Larry are the applicants. You, I want to take a look from here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this application, um, has been reviewed, I think, uh, we've received amended site plans that addressed all the board's concerns the last time. Um, I believe that all the board's questions have been answered, and that the, the application is ready for board action, now that we have a public hearing deal under issue, uh, that is the, the fact that, um, part of the, this is part of an overall project, and, um, we have conditions of approval, uh, that were made in January sixth, in the January sixth, two thousand eleven approval, that mandated before, um, certificate of occupancy could be, um, issued on the, the butter factory, that, uh, all the screening that was required under that approval will be installed prior to that C O B issue. Um, for, for lots of different reasons, including the sickness of the, of the C E O at that time, an interim C E O, and the fact it was winter, uh, that was not, that did not occur. Um, therefore, we need to make sure that we have some assurances that that activity of screening the butter factory, uh, does in fact occur, um, uh, in some way, uh, before this application proceeds. Now, we have three different options that, uh, we have discussed, and the applicant has discussed too, one, I think I sent that all to you in an email. One was, of course, they posed a bond for the construction of the, uh, landscaping, two would be for, uh, that the C E O cannot be issued for the, uh, structural, or I shouldn't say that, building permit could not be issued for the structural component of the, of the barn. Um, certainly, uh, since they've, they've started work, they could do, they could get a building permit for the foundation, but the continued structural, uh, building permit for the continuation of that, that barn and the hay barn cannot occur until that landscaping was installed. Or three, uh, could hold the C E O for both the cow barn and for the hay, hay barn until such time, uh, that the landscaping of the factory is installed. Unless you've got something else, Lucas, I think those are the three best options at this point.
Yeah, the, um, we discussed the options between the two of us, and, um, the one that stood out the most for us was the third one, because if we have any issues with landscaping, then we've got to come back to the board, and as we've seen, sometimes it doesn't always work out that we get a hearing, we may get to push out a couple weeks. I think the best timeline for us is if you hold the certificate of occupancy until the landscaping is done. That way, we've got some leeway as to getting landscaping done, if we've got to change anything, we can come back and have that freedom of movement to get the landscaping done the way that, uh, way that best suits the site and plan.
And this, and remind, just to remind, this is not the landscaping of the barn, at the barns.
Yeah.
The original landscaping.
The original landscaping request is for Kate's Butter. How does the board wish to proceed?
That works for me.
That works for me too.
It works for you, but I see the north direction. It sounds like a good, uh, solution to me. Yeah, on this list would be number two. The third one that, that. And if you look at the findings of fact, there are two of those. So we have a plan, one of those is.
So this, that would mean you can proceed with your work.
Foundation.
This is, um, is this the one?
I believe there's number two on your list.
Yeah.
Where, um, we can proceed with construction and go through the motion.
Yeah.
And then, at the same time, we can do landscaping and when the landscaping is complete, let's say, you know, by some miracle, the barn is done in two months, which isn't going to happen, but.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to get the CEO until the landscaping is done if that took three months.
Okay.
But the reason why I like that option the best is because if we have to come back and we lose a couple weeks here and there, it.
We shouldn't keep moving.
Exactly, it's a little bit looser on timeline.
Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't a part of the original review and approval. What's the, what's the general nature of landscaping that still remains?
It's for screening purposes, one of the requirements of the, uh, of the, um, of this particular performance use or performance standard is that there should be screening in the parking lot from, from adjacent properties and from the road. And, uh, so this isn't landscaping for, for aesthetic purposes. This is actually for screening. And it was selective screening, I should mention also. It wasn't, uh, the usual large, huge barrier when it was based on, uh, site distances along the highway and on the adjacent property. So, uh, the, the objective was to screen the docks, local docks, and also the, uh, parking areas. Uh, it was a minimalist approach versus putting in curb rides all the way across, which is what I was in the devil's report. An encounter to what you're trying to achieve with this kind of facility.
Any other comments? Okay. Okay, findings of facts and motion for approval, conditional use for Kate's Homemade Butter Cow and Hay Barn. Whereas on March twelfth, two thousand fourteen, the Orenland Planning Board received a conditional use application of Kate's Homemade Butter Incorporated to construct a six thousand four hundred seventy-six square foot dairy barn and hay barn on the site of Kate's Homemade Butter Agriculture Demonstration Facility on a thirty-seven point eight-two-acre parcel located at eight fifty-two Orenland Road, tax map five lot nine in the R four district. Whereas on April tenth, two thousand fourteen, the Orenland Planning Board conducted an advertised public sidewalk on the premises. Whereas on May eighth, two thousand fourteen, the Orenland Planning Board conducted a public hearing on a proposed project. Whereas the Orenland Planning Board has arrived at the following findings of facts. One, the applicant and owner of the property, Daniel Karen Patrick. The property is currently used as an agricultural demonstration facility and currently contains seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight square foot dairy products production facility as well as the four thousand four foot, square foot residence located at eight fifty-two Orenland Road in R four district. Three, the applicant proposes to construct a six thousand four hundred seventy-six square foot dairy barn for the housing and milking of dairy cattle along with a two thousand eight hundred square foot hay barn located to the north of the existing residence on the property. The dairy barn will contain up to forty head of dairy cattle that will be grazed in the pasture lands to the west and downhill of the barn. Access to both barns will be provided by an existing access driveway between the factory, facility, and the residence. A second emergency access from Drewsville Road will be maintained and open by the applicant for emergency fire apparatus accesses. Five, the applicant has received an amended stormwater management permit for the main compartment of viral protection for proposed activity dated June, January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. Six, the plan will not generate any increased knee peak runoff from the site. Seven, the applicant has submitted a sales enrollment sediment control plan as part of this application and has agreed to implement best management practices itemized in the D.E.P. Stormwater Management Law Permit Number L two four nine two zero N J B B. Eight, record plans submitted as part of the conditional use application include the following: Sheet two, Third Amendment layout plan, Kate's Homemade Butter by B.H. Two M. Incorporated, and dated June sixth, two thousand thirteen, with revisions to March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Sheet three, details, Kate's Homemade Butter by B.H. Two M. Incorporated, and dated June sixth, two thousand thirteen, with revisions to July sixteen, two thousand thirteen. Four plans and elevations for the dairy barn prepared by Design Company and dated April second, two thousand thirteen. Nine, the applicant's proposed layout meets all of the space and bulk standards for the R four district and is in conformance with coverage and dimensional requirements of the agricultural demonstration facility, performance standards of section eight point eight, eight point eighteen of the land use ordinance. Ten, submitted design elevations of both barns to depict construction that is consistent with the traditional England found architecture as required in section eight point one eight B nine. Eleven, the facility will be served by existing private water, no septic system will be required for or installed, and enclosed in a purpose manure pit will be installed beside the barn to accommodate manure generation.
Questions, sir?
Yes.
Along the way, did we have, or does it say anything about the, uh, the fire chief?
Fire chief submitted a letter, but the board has a copy of it.
No, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, then no concern.
Okay. Conformance with conditional use criteria, after due review and consideration, the Orenland Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with criteria of section nine point seven point each of the Orenland Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine point seven H one, that the use is compatible with and similar to general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The use is compatible with neighborhood, neighboring agriculture use and facilities.
You approve, slide five.
All in favor?
Yes.
And opposed? Nine, seven, H two, the use is consistent with comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood as at comprehensive plan encourages agriculture use in the R four district.
You approve?
Second.
All in favor? None opposed. Nine, seven, H three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. Since the resulting dairy products produced from the dairy barn will be used primarily in Kate's Homemade Butter Facility, there will be negligible additional vehicular trips generated by the proposed use.
You approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Nine, seven, H four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The proposed use will not increase the demands for water or septic flow on the property. You approve that?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
You all correct? Just ask that there be no plumbing at all in, in the barns?
For the cows to drink.
Okay. That's great. Okay.
No flush.
No septic needed.
How flushy is?
No free.
Okay. Nine, seven, H five, that there will be no noise, dust, or the vibration of smoke generated by the use that will risk effect neighboring properties in that noise. The nature of the business is not generating any other noise aside from the dairy herd. Dust, open spaces will be paved or grassed, and therefore the generation of dust by the proposed use will be minimal. Odors, odor, odor may arise from the handling and turning of manure, but they will be infrequent and not unusual for the permitted dairy operation. Vibration of smoke, no vibration of smoke issues generated on the site.
Or machine, too bad.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Nine, seven, H six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soil, drainage, and vegetation cover, are suitable for the proposed use. Significant grading will be involved in the construction of the facility. The applicant has prepared a sediment and erosion control plan that must be implemented and maintained during construction.
You approve?
Second.
All in favor? None opposed. Nine, seven, H seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No nuisance will be generated by the proposed expansion.
You approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Nine, seven, H eight, that all, all other requirements and applicable reasons of this order, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The application has met all pertinent portions of the Orenland Land Use Ordinance and design of proposed activities.
You approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Therefore be resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Orenland Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application of Daniel and Karen Patrick to construct a six thousand four hundred seventy-six square foot dairy barn and hay barn on the site of Kate's Homemade Butter Agriculture Demonstration Facility on a thirty-seven point eight-two-acre parcel located at eight fifty-two Orenland Road, tax map five lot nine in the R four district, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall complete all screen, buffering, and landscaping, landscaping approved and associated with the butter factory facility to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the dairy barn or hay barns.
Well, that's something that we, we can change. So we're gonna, uh, we changing that to, this is my motion would be, if we change that to, uh, what was the wording?
I lost that. We're to, I think that, what you wrote is correct.
What I wrote is correct. We changed it.
No, this is not.
For number one?
Yeah, number one, it says, "Code enforcement prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy."
Right.
Okay. So we're scratching out, framing building permit.
Good, okay. So that's been scratched.
Yeah, that's been scratched.
All right, good.
I'm glad you're paying attention.
Too many meetings, though, you tell me.
Um, that's right. Two, all sediment erosion control structures shall be installed prior to any field excavation or earthmoving activities on the site and shall be maintained throughout the construction process. Three, no certificate of occupancy should be issued for the approved storage building until a sealed letter is presented to the code enforcement officer and the town planner by B.H. Two M. certifying that all improvements have been installed in accordance with the approved plans. All site improvements. Four, all site improvements approved in this planning board's action shall be substantially completed within two years of the approval date. Otherwise this approval shall be deemed null and void. Five, any change from the approved plan shall require a submittal of revised plan to the board. How do we?
Make the motion, do we accept the findings of facts, uh, with that one change above the, uh, what's it?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
None opposed? So we, you finally got the evidence.
Thanks for showing up.
Sorry, I was late.
Saved the night.
I knew I was coming there. Sorry. Sorry, I mean, come in twice.
Did you come in from Connecticut?
No, not today. That was last week, I was in Connecticut. I just, I just had a.
I thought you had a long ride tonight.
No, I just had another.
Planner had to go get a, um, document or a map that he needs for the next application.
It's back there already.
He should be.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good luck.
Are you for?
Being patient with us.
Somebody brought in a map, we'll get what, back there.
Ted's going to get a map because to address some labor.
Oh, I think somebody, somebody walked in with a poster board earlier.
No, that's not what Ted, Ted left something at the office, he just went to get it, he'll be right back.
That guy?
Yeah, I don't think he's.
People all Julie.
Yeah, he might be.
Well, somebody's mauling around. Didn't recognize face, so.
He's not for some labor, is it?
Yes, that's what he said to me.
Why was it, was there a change?
I don't know exactly where he's gone to get, Tom, so I really can't speak to that. He said he, he just, from Mr. Two Thinker, he submitted to Ted, that's this. John Two Thinker, maybe he submitted something to do with your application to Ted. I don't know if that's who he said, but.
Paul, you already does it all, right?
When you're coming?
Yes.
Um, yes, this application at this point, um, I think the, uh, the only thing that's really outstanding in this, um, is the issue of cost of, uh, site improvements. Paul's given me a great estimate, unfortunately, most of it is building, and we only really bond, or we only provide performances and stand, or performance assurances for the site work, and that's the building. So, uh, I think we need to get it, you need to get it toned down a lot better than that. Um, the issue also, the next issue is going to be the question of what do we do about, uh, uh, the phasing, how do you want to handle the phasing? Remember, this is an application for a phase plan that's supposed to occur over, really, it could be up to a full eight-year period, but then, how many year? Eight years?
That would be dead by then.
What do you think, six years?
No, two or three. I'm going to the bank when we get approval and I'm borrowing up money to do it.
The whole thing?
Yeah. So I would imagine about a year and a half, three years at the most.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, the next question, of course, I, the one thing I did want to bring up, in doing the phase and going over the phasing stuff, I noticed in the original two thousand twelve application, as the board said, there shouldn't be any more physical improvements on the site or expansion or use on the site until that driveway is relocated. If you notice, the driveway relocation is phase two and not, and not phase one. So the question is, how do you want to handle it? And that's the question timing, this is the point. How long do you think, I mean, you stand up the building.
The first thing I want to do is put up a storage building.
Right.
And then the very second thing I want to do is put up the driveway, because we can't close, we can't do anything until that next, that new road's put in. That is a must, that's gotta be in there.
Yeah, you can't make your train raises.
So I mean, the first thing to do is put the storage building up, so you move stuff around, I mean, it's like plenty of checkers in my yard right now. Then I gotta put that, other road's gotta be in there before you even do anything else. And that's gotta get done.
And I was just checking the other day, you know, the conditions of approval that you did in the first one, back in two thousand twelve, and that was one of the conditions that before you do another, before he does any more physical improvement or that expands capacity, that, that road has to go in. So how does the board want to handle that? It, the question of spacing between phase one and phase two.
Well, I can't speak for the entire board, Rick. I think the intent of requiring the, the new road before further development was wanting to meet the site distance requirements and more of the, um, safety and security for this, for the system. I think the intent was to have on a plan that this, this was part of any future, not that that necessarily had to be the very first thing. So I think maybe the wording is there. I don't, I don't have a, have a problem with it personally.
Yeah, the other thing is, if I remember correctly, the fact is, between phase one and phase two of the old plan, or what they proposed is, was something totally different, was to be able to access where the old, uh, where the new storage building was, was even to get access to that area, okay? Where the, the new storage building is, for building purposes or anything else, can be existing through the present entrance, okay?
Yeah, that was for the, that was for the first storage building.
That's what I'm saying.
That's where you got the permit, and, and, and the permit was granted for the first storage building.
Correct.
And it said, before you get another storage building or any other improvement, you have to, you guys put in there, you have to have that road relocated.
That.
And so the question that I ask you is, how do you want to handle?
Yeah, but then what I was saying is, where they had, to propose where the new. Yeah, but then what I was saying is, where they had, the proposed, where the new, the, under, before the location of this one, was at a totally different location where they would need to put that road in to get at the old building two, instead of where he proposed to put it now, because the location was totally different.
I think it was really more of a safety issue, Marty, because there was, there was inadequate site distance set according to.
Yeah.
It did not meet the site distance, and you remember standing out there, you and I stood out there, you know, and we saw that, that it was, that northbound traffic on Route one, when that did, it was dangerous, especially you're moving something like a boat on a trail.
Boat, you're gonna see easier than trying, if somebody's standing five feet tall.
True. However, however, the, the guy coming may not see.
You'd be pretty, be blind and you can't see, a forty-foot boat pulled in there.
That, that may be, but the fact is, that was your concern at the time you made that approval. That doesn't mean you can't modify it, I just wanna make you aware that that was a condition you put on the, the two thousand twelve approval. How you handle it now is the, is the board's, um, is the board's decision.
I think for the purpose of, of the structure of where the proposed building is now, it is easier access to build the building and before occupancy, maybe, then that's when the road would be put in.
So I'm, I'm not clear why the road couldn't be done at about the same time. The, the, the way I sit from Paul Gadboy's plan, in the spring, now you'd be doing the gravel boat stores and constructing buildings, and then the fall would be bringing in the new driveway. The, the timing seems to be pretty close, uh, in spring or fall, but could, could they both be ongoing at the same time?
No, because I don't, if I put a road in now, you're driving to the containers next to the building, right? I need to get the building in, a little section of park there, and move the containers and box trailers on, they're useful parts now. I have to have a place to put the stuff. I don't have a place to move it all back here. It's like I said, it's a check-in game. I need to move, I have to do one thing to be able to put the other thing in.
Hop, skip, and jump.
Yeah, and it will be done probably before winter, that's my plan.
That's why I said, that's why I was saying, is to put the storage building up, okay?
Yeah.
Because where you existing is now, to get the materials and everything else in and out, do that 'cause you can't skip over the containers.
Can you refresh my memory, Paul, but the, uh, the new storage building is to accommodate existing customers, or are you gonna be doing?
Yeah. I don't have enough room to put, the problem is, is I got enough customers to go in here, but the boats are on the side of the building, the lawn, and try to move them all back from the middle.
So there, there, a lot of the boats are already on the facility right now?
They're there today.
So there's no additional trip generation, it'd be insignificant on site, because it's the same number of boats that are going in and out there now.
Yeah.
So what do we do about the, uh, condition we had, that you called, we said, we said, we would normally have required that driveway to, to move for, for that last building, right?
Well, the hump to be taken out of the road.
Yeah, but we, we realized, well, if you're gonna be doing this, this next project, we, we delay it. But we did have the conditions before the next building. Do we have, uh, do we have that wording?
I don't have the copy here, but, um, well, sorry. Essentially, that's what you said. You said, uh, where, where the site you have to.
Yeah. Site one, where I had proposed, building two would have meant all the blasting and everything else that had been done to put the road in, okay? Since the, the, the building is not going in, the, the site that was originally proposed, it's a new location.
I don't know what, what makes it, uh, the condition we had last time, we delayed.
Well, beforehand, beforehand, he couldn't put, uh, the, the building in, in the old site two, because the fact is, he would have had to take all the, the ledge out, okay? Before he could even build the building.
I don't know if he lost.
The building that he was going to turn out with, the old, the, that where he proposed now, we got two different locations of the building.
Yeah, but the new, the one that's proposed in the plan, that's not too much different than where the original was.
Yeah.
No, it's pretty, it's the same location Paul said, and it is, it's.
And the other one?
It has a different configuration, Marty, you're absolutely right. It came, came in differently, but the entrance to Route one is the same, because it's the same driveway permit. In fact, I'm looking at the state driveway permit right now. But it, it has a different configuration, you're right, which is why he's redoing Lot one. So the issue is, you had break, you had brought up an issue of either C O or timing on how quickly that road, that new road is, is installed.
And I would, I would be in favor of, of something to allow you to do that in phase two, that, that hinged on a condition with the certificate of occupancy, to make sure that that road was, the, the new road was under construction and the, or constructed and the, the other entrance discontinued.
Both parties kind of like happen at the same time.
Right.
The equipment's gonna be there to do the digging and stuff in the back, filling it at the same time, where we take it off the top of the material, get rid of the crud, move the granite, pop a couple of rocks, crush what we have on site to make the base and put the road in. Then I move one of the containers out of the way to access that, and then the next thing is to plug off the, or the entrance that we have now. It's kinda like one thing has to happen, put, I need room to be able to, you know.
You gotta be able to move maneuver around.
You gotta move stuff while I do it, yeah.
Hop, skip, and jump.
So what are we looking at, timing, Johnny? Do you wanna make a timing, you wanna tie it to C O, or you want, what would work?
Well, I, see, I, I agree with Jamie, and I'd be comfortable in, in going that, but I'd also be comfortable with the applicant simply combine phase one and two as one phase.
Yeah.
And had a duration, had a time duration of a year, year and a half.
Yeah.
Um, where you think that levels are gonna be done within that amount of time.
He wants to have this done before the stove lasts.
Well, I, well, I, just an alternative to make a condition that replaces before, okay? See, it should be up to the applicant.
Right. I mean, he's gotta be able to maneuver, it's not a, it's not an open facility that he's just gotta, first thing, come to the road.
Yes, he needs to have that.
Right. So saying those two phases, we combine it to one, you give.
Or I give you kind of.
A year or whatever you, you think you need to, to get that done.
I just broke into sections so it's easier to understand the numbers, that's all.
Well, but we're kinda, we're kinda caught in a little trap here, so if, I think this might be a good way to let you move forward, get the road in, the, the building in, we'll call it one phase.
That's cool.
What do you think, a year, eighteen months?
This first phase? This, we get an approval on this, I'm going to the bank borrowing the money for everything, and we're gonna start on the storage building immediately, and, you know, within a month or two, hopefully, 'cause I got a timeframe to put that up, because I gotta start getting stuff where I should put, you know, to do. And I gotta have that road in well before fall hits.
Okay, so you're already starting to think about winter?
What's that?
You're already starting to think about winter?
Yeah.
That's where it begins his money.
Doesn't go away.
Storage is what keeps the crew going.
Okay, so I get a motion from someone to make an amendment?
Yeah, that was your idea.
Well, I like, I mean, I like the idea for simplicity of, of combining phases one and two in your application. I think that, then you don't have the issue of coming back and demonstrating that something's been done before you get a certificate of occupancy, and it's a much cleaner for the applicant, I think, to do it that way. So I don't, I, to me, I don't know if we need a motion for that.
He's just agreeing.
Right. What we do?
Yeah.
Finding the facts of the society.
Okay.
So that's more of a, that's more of a work scheduling, phasing, there, building anyway.
And you're comfortable with that?
I just want you going.
I am. Make the half.
Start with the syllable.
You need to put some wording.
Also, number six and, yeah, but you've already got it. You've already got it. Just grab here, and number six, we can just correct.
We just, actually, the easy way to do this is to just scratch out the B.
Phase two.
Phase two, and this, that, the numbers, so C becomes B, D becomes C.
And then they, and the intro, put three phases.
Yeah, three phases, instead of four phases.
So we're eliminating which phase, two?
B and C. C is D. Hop, skip, and jump.
We all set?
Yep.
Okay, findings of facts and motion for approval of Southern Marine Expansion, two thousand fourteen. Whereas on February twenty seventh, two thousand fourteen, the rental planning board received a plenary site plan application on B, P B L Holdings LLC to remove an existing one thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot building and box trailers, construct a six thousand square foot retail building, eleven thousand square foot storage building, a new access driveway from Route one, and construct a twenty-three thousand five hundred square foot gravel boat storage yard on two point nine acre parcel containing an existing marine sales service and storage facility located at twenty-four sixty-one Palm Road, tax map twelve lot four two, four dash two in the B I district. Uh, one change we're gonna make, we get application in there twice.
Yeah.
Whereas on March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, the rental planning board and the rental, the rental planning board conducted a public site walk on the project site in accordance with section nine, eight, F three, C of the Oriental Land Use Audit and determined the legitimacy of request. Why do you have to get through a variety of application submission waivers? Gotta clean out that one section, you gotta, you have a planning board twice.
Yeah.
Whereas on April tenth, two thousand fourteen, the rental planning board conducted a public hearing, that's incorrect.
Maybe.
It's gonna be ninety-eight?
No, 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 we didn't do that. That was only a no.
That's right, that was only a no. A public hearing of the project after doing, notifying the bodies of the proposed, posting an advertisement in the general Tribune on the Oriental Town website. And whereas, the rental planning board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, the owner and applicant of the property are P B L Holdings LLC. Two, the property is located at Palm Road, tax map four lot seven dash oh two in the B I district. Three, the property is a property two point nine acre in size. Four, the property is commonly used as a marine sales and service facility as a non-offseason boat storage facility. The applicant proposes to re-subdivide the adjacent lot, also in P B L Holdings, remove an existing one thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot building and box trailers, construct a six thousand square foot retail building, eleven thousand square foot storage building, and a twenty thousand five hundred square foot gravel boat storage yard.
Period.
Period. The indoor boat storage structure will be, will not contain any facilities, including electrical plumbing, or early utilities and services at this time. The proposed project will be constructed in three phases consisting of the following. Phase one, construct a seventy-two by one sixty-five foot indoor storage building. Construction of the approved access road across the proposed lot one into lot two, and a closing of the current substandard access point at the northern end of the property. Phase two, construction of six thousand square foot retail facility. Phase four, construction of an, I'm sorry, phase three, construction of an outdoor gravel storage area. The proposed building meets all setbacks and dimensional requirements of B I district as established in section six of land use audits. Due to the increase in periphery of service and the concentrated runoff, the applicant proposes to install an extensive series of snowmored retention facilities to accommodate the maximum build-out of the facility. The proposed design meets the snowmored design performance standards of section seven thirteen. The proposed project will not yield any net increased peak runoff from the site in a twenty-five year storm event. The applicant proposes to close off the current road in phase, uh, one, phase one, and relandscaped the area with loam and grass and seed five, seed five street trees as indicated on the plan in accordance with section seven point six, C three, C. Uh, ten, documentation provided by the applicant including, include an existing conditional plan, a site plan, a grading, and site plan and grading, utility and layout plan, and detailed sheet prepared by Paul Gadboy's P E dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen with revisions to April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, along with snowwater calculations prepared by Paul Gadboy's P E. Eleven, the Oriental Fire Department has justified the existing hydrant resources on Route one are sufficient to meet the fire protection needs of the proposed project. Twelve, the proposed project is not located in or in close proximity to a shoreline zone district, while critical wildlife resources therefore will have no impact upon the resources. Thirteen, the proposed project improvements are estimated to cost three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Performance with site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the rental planning board has determined the application to be in compliance with the criteria of section nine point eight, F point four of the Oriental Land Use Audit as follows. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in section seven, eight, and nine point eight of this audit. B, the proposed project does not require any state federal permits. C, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Toronto and the provisions of emergency service and law enforcement to the project site and neighborhood, in that the Oriental Fire Department has determined that the adequate fire protection resources are available on Route one. Project will generate no additional traffic or situation or will increase the amount of public safety resources. D, proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. E, the project provides adequate snowmored management facilities, produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five year storm event, will not have an undue impact on municipal snowmored facilities and downstream properties. F, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood, or neighborhood, in that the proposed project will not generate an additional vehicular trips into a site. The, G, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitat, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs, and of, of the community, in that the project is not located in or close proximity to such resources. The proposed project will not reproduce noise orders, dust, debris, glare, solar obstructions, or other nuisances that will adversely impact quality of life surrounding parcels, in that the proposed facility will not be serviced by any utilities that can produce offsite nuisances, and the proposed use as proposed boat storage will not generate dust orders or such nuisance. I, proposed project will have a positive physical impact on municipal government in that property tax revenue and general progress activity will exceed the cost of municipal services demanded by the activity.
Do we need a, a motion to accept that, all that here, or?
No.
Okay. This is different than the conditions.
Yeah, this is just findings of fact. Therefore, be resolved, based on the above findings and conclusions, the rental planning board hereby approves the plenary site plan application for P B L Holdings LLC to remove an existing one thousand one hundred and twenty-five square, square foot building and box trailers, and construct a six thousand square foot retail building, eleven thousand square foot storage building, a new access driveway from Route one, and construct a twenty-three thousand five hundred square foot gravel boat storage yard on two point nine acre parcel containing an existing marine sales service and storage facility located at twenty-four sixty-one Palm Road, tax map twelve lot four dash two in the B I district, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall post with the town of Toronto a performance assurance in the amount of agreed to by the town plan as either a letter of credit, tri-party agreement, or escrow file prior to the commitments of work on each phase of the site, or the issuance of a building permit for, for each phase. Two, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any of the phases of both projects until the design engineer certifies and writing to the town plan that all improvements have been completed in accordance with these approved plans. Three, all soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to the, the site work, and those site works shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil subdivisions, stabilizations, mechanisms described here are not made effective. Three, all soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to the construction of the site where and those sites where shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil subdivisions, stabilizations, mechanisms described here are animated effective. So approved by the Urinal Planning Board, they say, they have made two thousand fourteen, how do we, Paul? Have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Left for discussion?
We have a dilemma though, gentlemen.
Huh?
We have one dilemma, of course. The problem is that, my law is that Paul has given me the new sign, that's four phases of. Now.
Could, could they proceed and?
All we do is just check on the note, probably, it just. Well, if his bank's okay with that, that's fine, I mean, we can give him this findings of facts with, I will attest to, and then he can give that to the bank, he still, he still has to give me his cost estimates, right?
Yeah. So that, that.
Signing the my law for a site plan, I mean, it's.
He's got the phases of it.
Right. Right, but is that, doesn't necessarily, something the bank is gonna want, see, if he's got a.
If the bank wants it, that's the only issue, otherwise it doesn't affect your proof.
So we, we would need a new front page with the notes with that phase change, we're sure, because if we're signing.
I don't feel real comfortable striking it out and initially in a my law, a record my law.
I think we should get the revised my law, but we, we have approved of, you can proceed.
Yeah.
We'll just sign it whenever we get anybody.
Yeah, and reproduce it.
I will sign, I will test the, the letter of the findings of fact and approval, that you can take the bank.
And it'd be important to talk with Paul too, to break out those costs by phase and, and how those two will be combined.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe you just have to bring the nap sack. That way you won't get the.
Right from the bank.
Right, and, and Paul can drop off those my laws anytime.
Yeah.
So you want a different copy of what, you didn't like that description you got today?
No, I love, I love the stuff I got. Oh, you mean, uh, I just, I need, I need to work it down a little bit longer. Okay, because it's lump sum.
What's that?
It's lump sum, it all depends on how, if you're gonna give me a lump sum, that's fine. But if we're gonna do a tri-party agreement with your bank, then I have to have it broken down.
I thought I gave you one that last email, individual items of each project to be done.
I'm not sure I saw that.
Yeah, well, I got a copy of my part for you.
Well, fine, we'll deal with that tomorrow, or we'll deal with that Monday.
That's why I gave you the first trip on the block.
When we get this. Three points, three points for you. Twenty-six thousand flat, blasting need seven thousand, phase two, phase three, three thousand. Yeah, these are, these are lump sums.
Not how much, well, that's what I got written down on a piece of paper for the excavation work and the roadway and everything else.
Yeah, well.
Well, how much do you want me to put that in? I mean, you're talking thirty-five thousand dollars for digging on the foundation and stuff.
Well, yeah, there's a number of things they're missing out on, but that's all.
What are you looking for?
Well, that's all. You want more right now? Okay, landscaping, load, seed, drainage structures. He's got an estimate here on blasting, that's good, that's terrific.
That's just needed.
Right, that's needed. New road is twenty-six thousand with the drainage pond, that's one drainage pond, what about the other drainage pond? There's three of them. There's, there's a lot of detail, because you have three, you have phases that you're going through. And you have one pond, you have additional stormwater each time you do another phase. And he's only listing one of them here, that's, that's why I was asking.
Well, the secondary crackin' wall, part of that number is that wetland impound you want next to the other building.
That's why I was.
So you need to have it written down.
They had it broken out a little bit.
I can do that.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's only if he's not gonna provide you a lump sum surety for the project.
Oh, I still, I still need to, I need to, I need to verify the numbers. Compared to detail behind it.
There's, there's detail behind it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
How do you figure that out? Yeah.
Sorry, I should have turned that off a little.
But I will put this in the file. Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Buckle up. You got approval.
I will send you some more information, thank you.
Thank you. We'll get you this, and when Ann does it, um, she'll, she'll give you the final copy, and then I'll sign it off, you're ready.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, item three, new applications. Item one of the new applications, Lovejoy subdivision sketch plan application for a major subdivision. Supposedly construct a threadlock cluster subdivision serviced by a seven hundred and twenty-five foot driveway on seventeen point nine seven acre parcel located at two ninety-five limit road, Tax Map twenty-eight, lot six in the auto one district. Peter Lovejoy is the owner and applicant. And Truth and Associates is the applicant's agent.
Who has these plans, because I'm missing a whole bunch of them. And we handed them out one meeting and then you handed them back to me.
That's right.
To be beat.
That's right.
So.
I figured, turn out some of them.
I'm not. We did not make a file of old as this yet. It must have been, it doesn't sketch.
Oh, you did, so all we have is.
There's two maps, gentlemen. These are conceptual plans.
I've got two sheets, two of two.
Yeah, but if you look at them, they're different. Okay, one has a road that goes in, that's basically got a hammerhead on it, the other one is a cluster subdivision of a concept.
I don't know how that had her.
Because you guys wanna get out of here. I don't know my data, but they were, they have an extra one of those. You found yours?
We threw the same.
Did you open it?
If they're two of two, they're not, they're different.
Did you open it?
No.
Open it.
Yeah, they are.
They're different. John, wanna step on up? Just as I tell you, this is a subdivision application of your sketch plan. The applicant is, uh, coming to get input from the board before, and, uh, I know we did a site walk, what was this, about a year ago?
Two years, ten years, a half week ago.
Yeah, two years ago. You might wanna do it again, we have one, I have one member who was, uh, wasn't here, and, uh, I don't know if everybody else.
I didn't make this, that site walk.
You didn't make it, we might wanna reschedule that, but I'll, I'll give it to you and you make the, the presentation on the sketch plan.
I'm, I'm John Keith, that's the reason. Peter Lovejoy is the former, you pay the extra. About two years ago, we turned in some paperwork to get some bots on paper about looking at a preliminary subdivision. The nice who located parcel, uh, Peter was looking to do some changes on his property, so we looked at doing some soil testing, we started doing the test fit. Then we had a survey, mapping survey, we had a topo, so we're trying to get together our thoughts on how we want to lay out a subdivision. So we've come up with a couple of plans, and we took the orders and kind of looked at them, uh, just trying to get some ideas from the planning board. What you'd like to see, try to get your thoughts involved in it too. We might actually, you should have, whether it's a six lot subdivision, and by the time you start pricing everything out with road, infrastructure and cost, it can bounce and close to the, to the six lot, it's just, it's a, truly worth a hat for the numbers. I think you should have one of the six lots, the one I had up here is six.
That's the one in the concept, correct?
Correct. And what we did is we tried to balance, with them a lot, uh, the up lanes and the wetland, we tried to balance the lot, so. We actually got a few little beach lots, I do remember. Trying to keep the houses up and dry. But I do think we should have it on site.
Before the mosquitoes get too thick.
Before the mosquitoes get too thick, yeah.
I should mention also, uh, that this is a cluster, this is a mandatory cluster situation, it's over six acres.
I actually felt the cluster worked well. In this case, it really did, yeah. Build a lot to be just a little bit smaller, we dedicated a lot to open stage.
Can reduce the size of the lot significantly, you just have to provide more open. No, I wet layer there.
There is, there is a lot on there, I mean, I, I don't think I had it, no.
No, I'm just saying, there's a lot.
Oh, there is?
It's wet. I remember walking it last time.
So, uh, since I'm not, there was, I have a few questions on, um, in six, but there's few on the road, they're separate, privately owned, they did, the two right on the road, or at least one of them on the road isn't on his.
The ones that we're proposing are there.
Well, it's there. The one that puts that hash.
The one I'm wondering is, is where the overall property boundary is, is, is it right up to limit road and go pens or? This is already a separate block.
Okay. Yes, this is, yeah.
And this is already.
This already, that's, that's correct. You drive and hear the, maybe it's.
So right now, the property is everything, and now it's all one except for this.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, good, thanks.
Once we get the technical stuff. This is, just to remind the board, this is, this is a sketch plan, this is to get input from the board. So would this be a, a six lot or a seven lot subdivision? Would you count the, the original as seven?
Seven lot on each. We have, the board has taken into consideration existing within, within it, so that we're going to your, your net calculation to move the rest of it for the whole project.
There's already a, a building there, dwelling there, there's gonna be six more we can't go. So I'm just, I'm not sure, I, I, my math says that one plus six is seven, so this is seven lot subdivision?
Yeah, that's an existing, that's an existing lot. This is being, that's a lot, where Peter's, where Peter's, um, work basically over his businesses, that's, that's the existing lot. Yeah, and then there's, there's one on the frontage that's, that fronts, a small house that fronts, and actually it doesn't show a structure in it.
Yeah, so we're not confident in that one, they have it.
Can we go on and just? Well, it's three, four, five, six, and then the remainder. Right? But this one, this one's different because it, this is, this is showing a lot of.
Well, I mean, this one's.
This is part of your bigger lot, yeah.
Yeah, this.
This has.
The, the, that's been, that's been, you know, in your possession or ownership for.
I've had my house here for fifteen years, my shop and everything. In this part, I'm trying to break off and separate.
Six more lots?
Yes.
It's still, it's still, if you're referring to road standards, it's the same, whether it's six or seven.
Well, yeah, so I just, I wanna read the site.
It's got access point from the road.
Problem is we have fifty feet of road furniture for that development.
Okay. So another question is, is your, um, I know this, this all, this is all, you just, it's early stage, it's still there. But your, um, your resident, your, your, your building, that's gonna be, um, have a, it needs to have a, a property.
It'll have a separate D.
It's separate, yes.
Okay, so right now, this, open space, not really clear.
My house will show off seven, eight, it's by somewhere.
Okay, and will the open space be separate from your?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, that has to be done. You're gonna break that up separately.
You have to know what, what is going to be the subdivision in order to do those calculations.
Right, you're gonna separate the, the existing, uh.
You think the criteria is a state lot, yes.
What does it have to be, a state lot? No, no, no. What other criteria?
The access strip cannot be counted as as part of the, uh, minimum lot area, so the access strip would be this portion.
Is there a logging road in there?
It doesn't have.
Or is that a string that I see coming back to you? Around the, your cul-de-sac going to the back of the property with dotted lines on both sides.
Oh, that's the trail.
Yeah.
That's the stonemobile trail.
Wow, you've got to put everything in there. I didn't know it would be a logging road, it would be a, you know, an old.
No, that's the stonemobile trail.
There's a trail you've walked in a pipeline bed, people walk and stuff, you know, the, you call that trail. Eastern trail.
I didn't know you could use stonemobiles on the eastern trail.
Always cross it.
Oh, dear.
How is, how site does this?
Right there, were you?
It's alright.
You don't foresee any issues?
I mean, I have to go back and look at it a few months ago, let's be honest with you. I didn't ride high, it's nice, but, um, I know it's fairly flat, but I'd like to look at it again before you do.
What's that?
Site just, just thinking of where that road is situated.
It's, it is flat.
That's why I can't picture where.
No, it is flat because it's down near Mark Waltz across the street.
Right here.
Yep.
Okay, it's all flat, all the way to there, there's no dippies or anything.
No, that's right, because, uh, yeah, that piece of, yeah, I know where you, I know where you thought.
Saw it there, that site.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
But it is a thirty-five mile an hour road, even though it's.
You wouldn't believe it. It's just.
It's rated that, it's rated that.
It's just, just. You did a good job finding the upland spots to locate the houses.
That was with the cluster provision, though, because the other provision, it just wasn't working.
Do you, have you done a, a quick estimate on what you think the wetland impacts will be for the road coming?
I actually started with the first lots, originally, um, we filed something at the town to come across, and he went one lot. So I did this stuff with DEP, filled out the permits and stuff, it happened, opened up the application, but, um, they were, they were grateful, but they didn't know what else was gonna go on, at that point we didn't know, so we're gonna have to refile that open application. But I knew that if you get it to work, it seemed like it would probably max the tier O, is what I remember.
The tier two?
Yeah. It could go into a tier two.
Okay.
But I knew that it was gonna max the tier one O, but when DEP and I, I was very honest with him, I said, well, you know, this is nice property, but we do have one of these, we're gonna be real about it. And I remember I was talking, it would probably tip that tier one, I mean, it's low, so. So that's why we kind of redid the plan again to try to, um, avoid and minimize, and we just keep trying to shuffle it all we can, but I think we'll probably get the best we can get. To get the balance of, we're coming to the balance. Oh, yeah, maybe, I really don't want houses in those spots. I mean, not that the road is, it's a better place for a road, but, um, the specs, there's a lot of water in there. At the back of it is actually, the spots of the swell of it, some of it is, um, not as, it's a. Goes back to, when I came in, I was talking to Penn a little bit about the soils and stuff, and it's the clay under that sand. And out there, what it does is it vares, and when it vares, it just comes in at different gaps. So you could walk or swallow that wetland, you're like, this is bad. Go over there twenty feet, you're like you're standing in water. It is, it is the way the soil is up there. And these back lots, though, actually have really nice sand on top, and then you go into that clay, but it's not as dense, but then as you keep going, get down to five or six feet, dense. Then as you keep going, you get down to five or six feet, dense. So, it, well, the site itself just changes.
That's actually a common problem, that side of the green microt in that area.
Right, it just, it's like, I mean, and I'm certified soil scientist, I've been doing this for twenty years. It, when we were digging the test, I was like, it's a great place for tests, because nobody would believe your findings, but it's just a difference. And then you sat comparing it to the county, so, and they were different there as well, too, and like, it's just the way it is. So, we need, we need to have, um, really good road infrastructure, drainage, stormwater. I mean, I'd like to see things wave, however, stormwater, that's one of the most important ones, because you're trying to get this to work with engineering. Stormwater is a key one. Are we gonna get water to move where we want it to go to? What's gonna make the best of these lots?
Yeah, I don't think the test is the problem, the problem is moving it out.
Yeah. On that subject, too, fire pond, we have a pond in the center, we know some of the neighbors have fire ponds. What do you think about that?
That's best to address, we, we want not to touch that. We give that to the.
The fire.
You wanna talk to the fire chief about that. Um, we do have standards in our subdivision ordinance on. About to go over that. We have standards in the subdivision ordinance on fire ponds for, this is east of the turnpike.
Right, if you do fire pond, do you have to do sprinklers? Okay, that's why we more fire pond.
No, it's.
The insurance issue.
Yeah, it's, it's page thirty-three and a half. Yeah, subdivision. Will you have your subdivision ordinance with you? Okay, uh, let's see. Areas west of turnpike subdivision provide for more lots. According to, shall provide adequate water storage facilities, and most of the fire chiefs has indicated that adequate facilities for water storage do not provide any, uh, to provide subdivision. Areas east of the main turnpike, planning board in consultation with the fire chief may require the subdivision to provide water storage facilities. Facilities may be dry ponds, may be ponds with dry hydrants, underground storage reservoirs, or other methods acceptable to the chief. These events should grant municipality grants access to and maintenance of dry hydrants. The board may weigh through requirement for water storage only upon supplemental evidence, the soil types in subdivision will not permit the construction or installation the fire chief has indicated or when the alternative methods of fire protection are available. The board shall require that whenever a fire pond is required, it shall be constructed and approved by the fire chief. There's other, there's a one that's actually more strange, though. I'm trying to remember exactly. That is in section eleven. Now I've lost it, should've found it. Talking to the fire chief is the first thing, but we also need to.
His, three fire ponds are around me.
I know. Well, that's the first thing you, you start with, is, is that one. Deal with the chief on that. The, uh, the other issue is, don't forget to do your net residential density, okay? You got a lot of wetlands here, you have to get to do that one. And, um, how's the board wanna proceed on this? You wanna set a, a sidewalk date? Go out there? I think we should look at this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, let's see. Twenty-second. You could, but after. You'd be pretty busy that night.
Well, we would do a sidewalk before the meeting anyway.
We're gonna need some time on this, though. We're not gonna do a half hour sidewalk.
No. We wanna walk this and do this right.
Right.
Exactly.
You know. You need to dedicate at least forty-five minutes to it, because I recall, it's tough going.
Oh, yeah.
And bring your boots.
First day in June is June twelfth, unless you do it on a date. Otherwise, you'd have to do it.
Are you on any schedule?
We'd like to keep the ball rolling, but we wanna do it as a team effort with you guys, you know? Wanna make sure things are good, and I don't wanna fuck up a ton of money, more money than everybody just, you know? Be nice to get more, but as we go along.
Yeah, I would agree. Well, you're planning a day like, you know, no, but June twelfth is even better.
Yeah. I mean, can we keep coming to the meetings, regular density, and we don't lose our spot?
Well, the twenty-second, the twenty-second is gonna be a public hearing on zoning laws, and that's gonna probably, that's gonna be going on.
That's the only thing we're doing on that anyway.
Yeah, that's all we got to schedule.
What's your answer?
That's the twenty-second, that's the next regular plan we're doing is on the twenty-second.
That's the non-no for you.
And then, the only other thing, yeah, and then the next one would be June twelfth, which is our next scheduled, uh, next scheduled plan.
So, that's when you want us to June twelfth? And what, what would we consider for a sidewalk? Should we go before the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
The other thing is, you wanna have, for the sidewalk, you wanna have it made out in such a way that where.
You want stakeout, so the house is gonna go and road.
Have a chest to the road. Also, you have, you have several test pit. For all of the back property.
Yes.
You wanna verify your other ones as well.
Yes, I'll do that.
So, if you can have the road, center lines, the cul-de-sac, the buildings, um, your test sites, um, anything else? Well, we're gonna have, yeah, part of this wetlands flag, too. We already do that.
One flag, but I get it from two years ago, so what I'll do is, I'll hook up the GPS and go through the tires and flip up. I'll make it look good, you can see where you're at, and I'll take the GPS with us, and we'll do it on the screen, so you can, we'll just walk it up.
That sounds good.
Anybody want anything else?
We're talking about June twelfth. Right now, you don't have anything on penny for that, for that day.
Where's the time lead? What's the time lead? Huh?
Time lead is Wednesday eleven. Wednesday eleven.
So, we make it for five-thirty, sidewalk?
Uh, time for me to get out? Yeah, it's gonna take. I'll meet you there, but I'm not gonna probably five-thirty for me.
Five-thirty.
I remember the first time, Mark, when we moved back.
Take a half an hour to get ourselves straight and both straight.
Take a half hour to find it.
Seasonal point.
It's not easy to get into. Actually, hogs get better drunk.
Yeah, have to, have to go around, actually.
Well, last time when we did it, we walked, we parked it, Peter's shop, he had a shop, and then walked down through the existing, around the existing pond.
It'd be easy to do that.
No, it's easy that.
Yeah, it's much easier than that.
Okay, so, sidewalk, June twelfth, five-thirty.
Okay. We'll post this.
We're just gonna keep submitting, or I'll keep.
Yep, keep it going, okay?
Appreciate it.
And, uh, for direction, I mean, they'll give you more direction at the sidewalk, but I think, right now, the planning board is, is partial to the, the cul-de-sac, is in the corner, right?
Yes, it's mandated by the, we don't.
It's mandated, it's also better to see.
We, yeah, we, we don't have the authority to change that, so this is, yeah, this is.
That's right.
Do you like us, if you think you like us, huh?
Go with that plan.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Next item up on the agenda, where's the modern sale revision approved initially used for me? Proposal to eliminate all approved landscaping and the firewood island containing group one, the customer parking lot, and where's more developed issue? Five, fifteen, fifteen, four, more tax map, thirty-three, lot two, in the highway commercial district. Benador is the owner, Linda Zoo is the applicant, and David Graham, architect, is the applicant's agent. Had all, Mr. Plant, I'll let you take over.
No, I'm gonna let the applicant do that.
He's much more eloquent than I am.
You think?
Yes. Come on up. So, we can get you on TV. Get your best side, you know? You know, we're in the, uh, automotive business lot landscaping, and anything that grows in front of vehicles, hide them. I, I have that experience before you have. I propose to do a artificial turf, which doesn't need any maintenance, it doesn't need irrigation, doesn't even cut, waste energy. Perfect. And it looks good, I got these, yeah. Sure.
You're tempted, look at it.
Doesn't pollute cars either. The power. All the schools now, that can afford it, they still use it. For, uh, uh. Play on. Thanks, Ed. I could afford it for all my house.
Yeah, but I've kinda hired the cows to eat, isn't it?
Yeah.
I've got no policy down here.
Well, sure you do. There's four wheels, cows.
After more.
I'm not sure about four. You wanna come over it, and don't grow that in your hands, and.
A lot less dirt.
Perfect, plus it looks like that year round. That's a nice. Looks, so it looks natural in the summertime. If you, um, like, the shrub is very hard to grow next to the highway like we are. If you go to ditch, you know, but if you go on, um.
It's even harder with that calcium they put down.
If you go to ditch, you know, crossing, you got a whole bunch of project, you live on the highway there?
Yeah.
It's all there.
Plus the Mark Walsh is easier to try and catch a fire.
What are you looking?
The only thing that's easier to handle than this is Mark Walsh.
No, that's catching a fire.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because it's turning on the heat, spontaneous combustion. You know, it's the hot embers. Look what happened today in the old orchard, the hot embers.
Yeah.
Is this the different? That was, that was the approval.
Yep.
From last time.
That's what you call your green vegetation.
There was also the, uh, the copy of the app.
I have the letter, I didn't have the plan.
Well, there was the plan.
I get that, I know.
Call low maker.
You got a copy?
There it is, I got some more of these.
Oh, there we go.
I'm sorry, I didn't hand it out, mistake. This is the plan that was approved. And you remember, it's significantly, it's no longer had that, just the five foot, it was expanded, if you recall. This is what was approved.
Last year.
As an amendment.
That before they tried, they had heated sidewalks. Heated sidewalks.
Yeah, the heated sidewalks.
Yeah. Somebody checked your computer already.
There's the new one. And the old one. Grass down here with, with no curb, and the field flower, field flower grass.
This is.
Sure you can't, no.
I do.
You plow it out.
No, I just slide right over the top of it. See, you see me. I didn't go, I didn't turn a, replace a lot of divots this year.
Jimmy Bennett, are you aware that this is the new plan, that that's an old plan, that's been superseded by this plan?
Yeah.
That's what you were approved for, for last year.
It doesn't go on. Now, this, this same, this one.
Hmm, no, this is considered. Yeah, that one right there.
That doesn't go.
That just can't finish off.
Yeah, this one's old.
Yeah, that's the one.
Let's think free.
Yeah, the, the material, plant material are basically daylilies. Uh, with the brick, you remember, it's a brick paper path, the detail is shown here. And, uh, daylilies because they could tolerate the, you know, the impact of the, uh, of the, the snow plowing and the, and the, uh, the calcium, or whatever's in that. That was the plant material that was specifically selected because of the conditions in that area.
Then they, then somebody threw in the grass down here.
Yeah, that was one thing that was required, and that you put in, grass in some shakers.
And now, but I gotta clean this one.
Well, it actually shows a curve all the way along through here.
On the backside?
Yeah, shows on the backside and front.
I gotta, I gotta plow all the time.
Oh, this is the highway. That's the highway.
Well, I have to clean it. I have all my life.
Okay.
Because if you don't, everything gets filled up in front of it.
Keep it visible, right?
And turn out, because the state doesn't plow it the right way. The state doesn't plow it the right way.
Be all right if I wanted to.
Yeah. And most of the properties along with, don't, uh, don't butt down line, uh, to your property line, because there's always recess. And we've had that always before, tar, bentar.
Yeah. That's, that was approved last year.
Oh, that's the same as this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the reduced version.
Okay.
That's a reduced.
This has more detail, and also has the planting schedule as well. So, basically, what it is, is brick pavers and, uh, with islands of, of.
Basically, I don't want farm on the one.
Well, then we have, we have, we have an issue here, Joe. I mean, and you know what the issue is, and that is your requirements of your, of your buffer, that's required in this particular district. And this was your compromise.
We got the one for you, we got the one.
No, the landscape buffer. Well, I'll just read it for you and the board's, board's benefit, just so you know what the board's dealing with right here.
Yeah, that's one of the ones that we were supposed to be doing.
Yes.
Probably with me. What are you doing?
Yes.
Other way, it's money.
I got many of the statutes, is that what you got?
Yeah, was that, that, you read the stuff that I have right here. Uh, it says basically, um.
Gentlemen.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, good. Okay, requirements in section seven, six, C, three, B, the trees, all parking lots shall be landscaped along the property boundaries with shrubber, trees, and other landscaping materials. This landscaped area shall be a minimum of fifteen feet wide, except in HC, CCS, and VI districts. And the CCS and AC districts, the landscape area shall be fifteen feet wide along any street, twenty-five feet wide along any side, a rail, lot lines, a budding lot, residence, and use. But this building, it's been here fifty years, and, and it's close to the highway, and it should be granted by.
Well, the only issue why the planning board.
You're done the foundation, right?
The planning board originally, as you recall, did, in fact, reduce that fifteen feet down to this, this, uh, five foot with, at the request of the applicant, taking that into consideration. Um, in other situations where there were expansions of an existing building, which we have had, we just had one, uh, with AIM, the planning board required the applicant to meet the existing standards. And that occurred with AIM, that occurred with County Auto, in which we actually made people cut pavement to put this in in order to be in accordance, because they were expanding the facility. This is an expansion of the use, and the planning board did reduce it down to five feet. In, in deference to the fact that it was an existing facility. I'm not trying to make, make any changes, but the, the issue still is, the question of having separation, landscape separation, uh, in there, and.
I'm not proposing not the landscape.
Well, the only call for it is trees and shrubbery. And we've gone down to perennials in daylilies, which are, which, you know, come up early and then disappear when, when the bad stuff starts.
I'm proposing to do this, or it looks good year round. Other than, other than that.
Well, why is that bad?
Why is that bad? I changed my, covered my, uh, my vehicles, what I use to make a living.
How, how's it cover your vehicles? The material's three feet tall.
This one.
No, but that's, that's.
The ones that the fore drives, which you don't. The ones that the fore drive, which you tell it keep growing.
But those are trees. This isn't trees. These are, these are, these are daylilies. They go three feet tall at the maximum. Some of them are only two feet tall. To take that into account, so it's not like, like there's anything here that is. And besides, the area where this is involved is actually most of it's customer parking. It's not where you have to display. You have to display here and you have to display there, and it's not, it's not interfering with your display at all. Clean it out.
You want it, you didn't, you didn't want it, you didn't want to get up to it, you know, just sit down.
Any comments in front of the board?
Well, as you turn out referencing, you're cutting it, BI, BI district is not where we're on Route One.
Agreed, but this is the same standard we apply in BI and HC and in, and this is the HC, this is the CT.
Oh, let's put it this way. As I've stated before, I don't agree with it.
Agreed, but it's still in your notice.
Yeah, that's the, that's the...
Because that was supposed to be part of our bucket list of addressing.
Well, when they came in front of us for the, uh, application for the changes to the existing structure, one of the compromises was there was going to be a vegetated buffer zone right there.
I didn't, I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
No, but it's... Any rounds?
It's still green, too. It's still green.
I don't know, um... I've been many rounds on this board and each time we let, we let some go because the next time you'll, you'll add the landscaping and, and it's still not there, so this seemed like a, this was actually a, a good compromise. You kind of, we lowered, there's no, you have no trees out front. And, and it, it's, to me, that looks like it's going to look really nice. With brick, you don't have to worry about mowing that. I don't think you have to mow brick.
The weeds grow between them.
Maybe so, for your, weed killed down a bunch of years or something. I don't know what's wrong with, I, I, I'm having a hard time of saying what's wrong with, with the brick, with the shrubs this side.
What's wrong is, uh, it's four hundred fifty feet curved in here. Moss.
Isn't it, isn't it brick? I saw herringbone brick, just sit.
Sitting like a... Curving, it's mesh covering on each side and then brick, if you want to fill it with brick.
But that was a great point when you guys came to us, in front of us.
What, me?
Somebody had to agree with you, because it's... Your, your...
Kids don't plow it.
Good point. It takes, that, that's a make, that's a make up usually.
Well, this is one of the areas that I know the board has wanted to address for, for a very long time. I, I personally am of the opinion that there are several types of businesses. Automobile dealerships being one where that outdoor sales, playground equipment would be another, if that's what you're selling. Those sorts of things need to be visual. So I believe that the board should have some, uh, ability to, to adjust those requirements based on certain kinds of businesses. Unfortunately, our regular, I'm not even sure how it got approved at this level because this doesn't meet ours, the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written.
Well, I haven't changed equipment yet.
I'm sorry?
I haven't, we haven't changed equipment. I don't know why we had to come to planning board then.
Uh, because we increased the area. You increased the area, you added the showroom on the side. And you, you added additional, you expanded the building. That's why you had to come to planning board. It was a building footprint expansion. Well, it also went out to the side too. It went out to the side too. You had that side expansion.
In the, in all the changes to the zone, proposed changes, right, to the zoning up through that, what's a quick synopsis of what the landscaping requirement should be?
Pretty much the same as there now. Still lasting this country, so.
But they're...
Landscaping now?
No, proposed.
If approved by the, if approved by the town, it would be similar to what's in the ordinance. And, and I don't think we at the board have the authority to, unfortunately, to...
You're all against the word.
I, I don't think it's inappropriate to do that. And I would, I couldn't like that grass, I do.
The grass looks good.
Or certain, and, and again, but for certain kinds of businesses, right? The idea down there is to, to attempt future builds to, to will have that character and so forth, which everybody's been working so hard to do. Again, personally, I just think there are certain businesses that it's probably not conducive to. But our current ordinance, I don't think gives us...
Well, you might have to change your ordinance. You want automobile dealers in town.
Trouble is they don't have that.
Socko. I'm not guess I am.
Any additional comments? I wasn't heavily involved in, in most of this conversation, so, I mean... Personally, I think there could be some other landscaping amenities that would go in the buffer that I think would end up being, being more natural, more attractive, probably than the, the, the artificial grass that you proposed. I'll stay quiet on my perceptions as I've driven by and sort of, I've always wondered, why? We're having to do a lot, a lot of the stuff anyway out there, but, because that's beside the point. But what I would be curious with...
I don't want a lot of fancy stuff out there to distract from my vehicle.
Right. And that's where, I don't know with the daylilies, you know, if something more of a low-profile shrub would be more palatable to, to you guys, may not be any different. You might not care to have them one way or the other, so. But that's, I'm not the landscape designer on the, the plan.
Neither are most business owners.
Oh, but this was proposed to us and we accepted it.
We accepted it.
We, we didn't come up with that.
You know, the, the daylilies were, were proposed as an alternative to the shrubs. Because of the concern, they were proposed because of the concerns of hostile environment. Salt, drought, um, obviously heavy, heavy, uh, heavy snow loads. Because they die back during the winter.
Right.
And there's nothing to hit the bones. And then during the, during the summer, or during spring, the summer they come up and they provide, what you have in there is probably just mulch. That's what they proposed. With heavy glaze and those involved, with the brick in between, it's not a continuous line. It's just island, small islands of it, with the brick in between, the brick was, was the, was the thing. The architect in, in, in the applicant's agent, he wanted to put in there as, as a signature, as a signature element. And, and that's what they sold the board.
Mr. Levitt, you got a comment?
Yeah, uh, isn't grass a kind of landscaping? That's what we do all the time. Grass is landscaping and it's, it's my belief that any board in any town has a certain amount of latitude that they can use to, to go one way or another. And along Route One, you are going to be hard pressed to keep any landscaping.
I, I think we do have some latitude, though. We've already gone from a minimum of fifteen feet wide down to fifteen eight now, so we can't get to where it's, becomes nothing and we can't wave it, can't just...
But also, but also they're going to creep out these three feet.
Is that, is that regon scripty?
Yeah.
What, landscaping? Most of it's brick.
Yeah, four hundred and fifty by, not, maybe not four hundred and fifty by.
Right. There, if I'm, if I'm looking at this right, along that whole track, there's only like thirty, right? Thirty shrubs or daylily plantings. This is the one that was approved?
Yes.
There's one, there's one...
Landscape's schedule is right next to your hand.
There's one tree.
That, that tree's around here.
You got one tree here.
Yep.
This is daylily, daylily, daylily.
Yeah, they're daylilies. Yeah. It doesn't even have, it doesn't even have the, that's right, before they planted, they had to come and put the schedules and, and you had to work that out. So what we have is, these things are ten feet wide, right? I mean, ten feet long. I mean, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Oh, yeah.
It's a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty feet out of... Out of what? Ben, how, how far did this?
Fifteen foot, these fifteen foot in between, so fifteen, one, two, three, four, five, six...
How long's the road in front?
Four.
So it's about a fourth of...
Fourth, yeah.
A fourth of it contains plantings.
With the herringbone, with the herringbone, uh, correct.
In between, right? And you said that's fifteen feet?
That's fifteen feet.
And that is fifty.
Fifteen times.
For me, and, and, and again, the, I just don't know that. For the landscape material, because it does give you other landscape material, and this is a landscape material that you're presenting, it's not one the board has seen before. But it's a matter of... If that's the only thing we're addressing, I think we have the authority to do it, but this is, this, this landscape buffer doesn't meet the requirements of the, the, yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure how we handle that, that's what I'm saying.
Put this back.
We leave the daylilies in there.
Let's put this, this back, turn it, please.
Well, I just...
It's a green.
Yeah, I mean, we go back to painting green again.
Well, it is painted green.
Well, that's, that is great.
But, 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 but.
You know what I'm saying? You want to keep the daylilies there?
No, he's, he's, he's...
Well, they're always planted on your...
Why?
Daylilies don't go, they die.
He submitted a letter...
I can't kill them in my yard, they just...
They keep them back.
Ben, Ben's letter to the board requested that all shrubs, flowers, and that be removed. And this artificial turf be used, so he said, good synopsis of what, all the weddings were...
All the brick is removed.
Yeah.
That's a sent a letter, I saw that. But we made other applicants conform to the standards of the ordinance, and we've got to be consistent in the way we do things.
That's where I struggle, here we, we made Marty do something. Yeah, you made me turn around and redo the plan over to Ben to, to verify, to verify that they...
About Marty.
I mean, wait, let me finish. You made me verify...
I opened up a can of worms, though.
To verify that the green grass will be maintained.
It does that enough?
The green grass will be maintained.
Ben, you say that we made you, we only, this came from, from you all, a proposal.
We didn't, we didn't propose this.
An architect and a kid, I never see that.
That wasn't a landscape, that wasn't an architect. I want to make that clear.
I tried, we, we had to discuss it. Yes, Mr. DuBois.
So, just a couple of comments. You know, I think, you know, to Bob's point, I think the board tried to, the board knows how where's motors in the past has been reluctant to put any type of landscaping, so the board worked really hard to come to the compromise to at least meet the intent of the ordinance and, and put some landscaping. Now, if you ask me, if you look at County Connection, although they're not there anymore, but you look at County Connection and you look at Arango Ford, which is right next door to these folks, I think that looks pretty darn nice.
Sure it does.
So why, why is this any different?
The counter place, we want to...
It's out of business, but it has nothing to do with what it looked like.
It might not.
So, so Arango Ford's not out of business, Arango Ford doing well.
No, but they, the, it's not all hopped up across the front either, like...
Yeah, they don't have the grand...
You know, it's a little different tree.
Their situation, you're going to ditch there and, you know, a lot of ones that salt back down the ocean before you get something out.
Yeah, that's the...
When you put vegetation there, Route One, we're going to be replacing it every single year, Joe. All the stuff from the highway.
But that's why we, I think, make allowing the brick makes sense, because the brick's not going to, it doesn't die.
Well, the brick, the brick's fine.
Yeah.
Let me break it all, that's fine.
With just a few little plantings of, of the daylilies, which is... But really, I'm serious, I can't, I literally cannot kill, my wife wants me to pull all the daylilies out of the ground. I'll never get them off, they just keep springing up.
Are you talking about the tall daylilies or those little, those little...
The greens, the greens are this high and the, and the flowers are that high.
They don't last very long. And you don't... Some of them are reproducing.
I'll throw some in there for you, my wife wants me to get rid of it.
You don't have one, you don't have one.
You have a bagel.
Incredible variety. There's a huge variety there. Some of them are written, but, but... They're pretty hard to tell.
Who brought up the variety?
Uh, actually, the varieties were offered by the applicants. I didn't...
Yeah, other stuff was proposed by us, I mean, it's...
We would have been shipping... I would have more, I would have made it simpler specification than that, that's, that's pretty big fruit salad.
That's what it is, fruit salad.
So it is, it's, it's fruit salad. So...
Green is green.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not disparaging what the architect did, but I'm just saying it's, it's a lot of color.
Green is green.
The good thing is, no, it's not green, it's various colors and the, the interesting thing is they have different bloom times. That's, that's why they put in so many different varieties, they have different bloom times, so there, there's always some color out there. That's the, that was, I think, your intention too.
How do we proceed, Mr. Leonard?
You make a decision. Or you can defer it, it's up to you. You want to think about it, you can defer it, or you make a decision. Or you can go out and do a site, site visit. It's the board's prerogative. And we did a site walk, we accepted this from their plans. Uh, it's an approved plan. That is it, you just ask for an amendment. To approve plan.
So, so to formally amend something, I think we would need a little more detailed information on what they were proposing. I mean, I was under the impression at first that you were looking to put the artificial grass along the whole strip.
He is.
He is. Okay, but then, well, then you mentioned the brick remaining in part of it, or all?
No, I just said, if you wanted the brick, it...
Oh, okay, as a, I, I got you, as a concession, okay.
Do the brick instead of the...
I think, I think the applicant, if you, if you have a proposal to do this, first thing we have to have an actual proposal on...
What is it?
We want to...
Right.
You know, what, what, what is, what is the proposal? Besides just getting rid of all the daylilies and one tree? And then the grass, is the grass upper on this too? Because I think you basically, it said it was the...
The letter said take everything...
It said, tell me, take all the landscaping.
Take all of, take out the shrubbery, take out the, take out the trees, take out the brick and put in the rest. That's what you, that's what's in the letter.
Well, no, in the letter, I wish to propose options for the five-foot landscaping there. This letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I wish to propose options.
And then the options proposing is the official...
Why don't we go out and look to see what the curbing looks like?
Marty, we've been out there half a dozen times. I, I don't... Maya, we've been out there half a dozen times, I, I don't think another site walk is necessary here, but that's my opinion.
I threw out my opinion. You want to see what the curbing looks like, because he's never had curbing there before. That was part of one of the original, the bottles that he did want to do, and he, he did put curbing in, because in the past, it was all open, drive in, drive out all the time.
Easy to follow.
And like I said before here, during with all the, with that curbing there, it has stopped some of the water flow, which it would use to run all the time down the park.
Now running the street.
Yeah.
So I agree with Roger, I don't know if a site walk is necessary, but what, even if it was more of a, of a sketch plan of what you guys were hoping to do, what I think would be helpful.
I got one. Okay, I'm better, that is me.
So there's no trees, no shrubs, no plants, all has to do. Okay, why not just paint it green? Why green, why not yellow, or blue?
Well, you don't like that. You don't like daylilies either.
I'm not crazy, I'm either. But it's on the plan.
You don't like, no, no.
Are you motioning anything?
I have no motion to make.
I like the green, uh, what he has proposed there, the green grass. My opinion. Making a motion? Yes.
Can you state your motion again, please?
As Ben proposed on the plant, the green grass.
So you want a plant with green grass?
Yeah, green grass has the best of it.
So you're motioning to, to approve his amendment to use artificial turf, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Thank you for raising it correctly.
Thank you.
I second that for the purposes of discussion.
Like I said before, I think there could be a lot of other alternative ways to handle that, that may not have the expense of the brick, or even the potential maintenance of the brick, that I would be inclined to look into beside from the artificial turf.
Artificial turf's expensive enough.
I, I imagine that somebody who makes this makes a lot of money off of it. I, personally though, I think there could be some, some, a better alternative out there than, than a strip of artificial grass. To me, I mean, and, and, yeah, I'm not, I am, would be more inclined, I'd be happier to see a, a stone in between. You know, maybe with some small, low-level shrubs coming up through, bulb style, that would, would die back and come back up, that would provide a little, a little more aesthetic value than, than just grass. Just, well, no, fake grass, listen.
I, 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 I agree with that, I think the grass looks kind of cheap, you know, it, it, it might look good when you first put it down, but after a while, it just, it's that's.
That's real grass you're talking about, this stuff stays like that all the time.
I haven't seen it.
Whenever I see it, I tell you, whenever I see that, they're.
You go to NYA, you may have had it here for ten years.
Any of the, any of the big schools there would use artificial turf.
Instead of real grass.
That's what they wanted to try and do RSU.
Put foothold up there.
Put the artificial turf in.
If you, Jamie, you need a, a proposal. Just the artificial turf. We're, we're watering down the requirement that we don't have authority to.
We're not watering down, we're improving them.
No, the requirement, the requirement that set the standards is requiring fifteen-foot vegetated buffer. We're down to where it's, we're down to where it's eight feet and there's nothing vegetated, plastic, so, it's, so how do we, how, how do we, how do we accept it?
You want to do that, that's fine, you can, you can find all kinds of reasons why you want to do that. I propose a green grass.
There's, there's one reason why we have to do something, because it's required, it's in, it's in the standard, it's one of our ordinances, it, it's, that's the one reason, we're looking for a compromise, and we have something that's not bad, and if maybe you want to change it, but, but to go down to a, a strip of plastic, that's not a vegetated buffer. That's what it would be, a strip, again, why not just paint it a color, it's, it's same effect to me, driving by, you just see.
Fifty miles an hour, you probably wouldn't tell.
Doesn't matter, if it's brick or a daylil, at least fifty miles an hour, it doesn't matter.
Tom, we suggest that a long time ago, painted green, there was a proposal.
Yeah, we've got a motion on the floor, in a second. All those in favor?
What, I'm sorry, what's the motion?
You moved to approve the amendment to allow Mr. Midoriya's artificial turf.
Okay.
Two in favor and three opposed?
Yeah.
They asked you to oppose.
Is anybody?
I don't know if anybody's sustaining.
I was trying to think of something else.
The, the, get it count?
So the motion fails.
Motion fails.
Can we table this, or we got to?
No, you have a motion fail.
So the astroturf isn't there, you can go, you can open up, or the, Jamie's discussion, or the applicant may want to propose something else.
Yes, right. So they can bowl it over, and if they want to do something else, it's up to the board.
Don't worry about it, I'm not going back. I'm glad I'm through. No wonder. And I think that was the original plan, old man. Three more guys, so you're the one that made that, that one?
Yeah.
We're there before my time, I don't know how it came about.
Thank you.
Good night.
Uh, let's see. Okay, we just have a flurry of, of projects, um, right now, we're, we're back into a, a low, all we have is subdivision, uh, the Lovejoy subdivision, nothing else on the horizon at this particular time, so, um, there's nothing really coming before us at this particular time. Uh, in regards to upcoming events, um, we have, as you know, the complaint committee is going to have their public hearing on the fifteenth, here. Assuming that, that they decide to send it on to the selectmen for inclusion in the warrants, that will, that will be, um, on the town warrant, just making that assumption. Second thing is then the plant, your, all of your stuff has been advertised, map's been done, it's been advertised in the paper, all the notifications have gone out to every single one of the property owners within, all of the identified districts, uh, the strikeouts, and all that stuff has been done, it's ready to go, the word has been written, and you're ready for public hearing on the twenty-second. So, um, we're ready to go on that. In terms of, I, I think that's it, frankly, it's been an exhausting period, uh, you could congratulate the planning board for working very hard and diligently on getting this done in time. And, uh, we're ready to go to public hearing, and see what happens at that particular time, we've gotten input from a number of people so far, and a lot of questions. By the way, uh, if you're looking for it, all of the, uh, all of the items have been posted on the town website, uh, both the complaint and all of your amendments are on the town website for the public to, to read at any time. It's also been mailed out to, or emailed out to our distributionists as well, so, um, we've got it out in here as much as possible, and going to be talking to the papers, see if we can get an article written on it, so we can reassure that that's another venue in which we can notify people that the public hearings are coming up. Um, so everybody is aware of, of what's coming, um, and can make comment at the end of the meeting. Otherwise, um, I have not really much more to report, and we have, um, a couple of enforcement issues that may be coming up, I don't think it would be coming to the planning board at this particular time, I'll keep you aware of what's going on with the, with the.
Can, can I ask about your communication and the ex parte communications that have been going on?
Yeah.
Between the board and the public?
Yeah.
It's not good.
Yeah, that, that was a, I, we had an enforcement action I got dragged into, and, uh, in which the, uh, the person was, one of the people works for the person who's involved in this, was saying that they had been talking to the planning board members. And, um, I just wanted to remind you, I fired off that email to you to remind you really quickly that that's something we have to always abort the ex parte communication. Cannot talk to the general public about anything that's pending, or any, uh, any kind of thing regarding any application, the very simple reason that unlike the board selectmen, or any of the other committees, you guys are a board, you're judicial board, you do actions, you make judgments on the applications. And the problem with ex parte communication is, that compromises your objectivity, it puts you in a position where somebody could, somebody from another perspective could accuse you of, of being, uh, of being biased, and require you to recuse yourself. Or after the fact, appeal a planning board decision or planning board action based on the fact that the, uh, several people have compromised, and they have been communicating with applicants outside of the context of a planning board meeting. Planning board can only discuss planning board matters in this context here, in this meeting.
In or that's already public, right?
Anything that's public, but anything that might be coming up, or anything that is, is occurring, um, or is being considered, please do not speak to the public, do not speak to the applicant, if the applicant ever approaches you, just say, look, I want to talk about this within the context of a planning board meeting, um, if you have an issue or a question, ask the planner.
I know what you're referring to.
Yeah, and, and he will, he will communicate through, through the board, but if any one of you starts talking to the individual applicants or representative of the applicants, it puts you in, in a, in a position of jeopardy, puts the town in a position of jeopardy as well. Where, as I said, somebody could appeal a decision based on an accusation, whether it is justified or not, of bias, uh, in, in the decision-making process because you talked to them. So, just a reminder that we need to really watch that, ZBA and planning board, the only ones in that real position, so be very, very careful. And I, I mentioned that, you know, uh, we used to have the town attorneys come and give an annual refresher course to all of the boards that are in these positions, basically the ZBA and, and planning board, and I think they also would deal with selectmen on, on wider, different issues. And when you get together and they, they would just remind you of some of the limitations you have.
One in two years ago, where we had people would join with the selectmen and the planning board to gather, they'll came in for you.
Two years, head back down.
Two years, we talked a lot about what they're trying to do again.
Question.
Yeah.
Did you get the update from the board, uh, from the project on Route One, about the wetland or whatever else that, so that he can turn us, start his, uh, construction of the.
Yes. And I couldn't think of that, the applicant said. Thanks for reminding me, because that, that is something I wanted to bring up to you, I didn't send it to you, because I just got it in that three-day-long.
At that point?
Yeah, Jimmy Logan, uh, from Alfred, uh, came in, sat down with me, and then went out and reestablished the, um, Wetlands Line and the Wardboards Project, and standard that, yeah.
Re-verified.
It verified, it's, those lines we built. And, uh, and they actually, some places, Sabegot Tech, they said, re-routed the line, and they were a little concerned that, that the line actually would go closer, closer.
Away from.
Away from the, away from the building, so, uh, Jimmy, you know, this, he sent me a letter, and I could send it to you, or I'll send it out.
Yeah, it's okay.
It's all okay, no more paper, right? It's, it's confirmed, so, they're, they're ready to see. Yeah, he's got, he, he, his only thing is, he's going to get his, um, he's going to get his, um, his performance stuff in order, and that's it, he's ready to go. So, he has to do that sort of construction.
Yeah, just a question prepared, if, if the board chooses to make a change for the Fritz property, does that give you enough time?
Yeah. No, that's, anyway, that was, that was going to be one of my common questions also, this is the, you know, the eleventh hour, the pumpkin is just not ready to leave. Well, what was it? Ideally, you know, we, we have these public hearings prior to, with enough time to make changes, but that's in the patent stuff. I, I'm not so sure, because I talked to his son-in-law today, and, uh, about his property, and, um, I don't think there've been any changes since, we didn't change, I'm pretty sure, I, I can't say that with certainty, I want to sit down with, with Dick and Golds, but I don't think his property has changed fundamentally in this round of ownership, it's going from CCS to, um, to DB one and DB two.
Yeah, and if he's allowed to have a junkyard permit, or a junkyard permit, it shouldn't change that, he should still be allowed to do that.
I don't see the thing is, I, I think he's always been, he's been in the CCS since two thousand and seven.
Right, but he was probably grandfathered back then because he had.
And he would be now.
And he still would be, he may not understand that, I don't know.
No, I, I, Marty's shaking his head, I, I agree, I think, I think he's, his license expired. He doesn't have a standing license, I don't think, right now.
Oh, I, I don't know.
You got, given him one recently, I don't remember him getting a junkyard license.
He may have it, he may have it, but he's not using it, okay?
But it's going to be renewed by the selectmen.
I'm saying. If it wasn't lapsed.
If it wasn't lapsed. The one thing I would ask if possible, let's try to find the meeting if we can involve, was in the, there's a big difference about opening this, I know.
He doesn't have a date.
Yeah, how you going to find that one, that was back when I was on the board.
I mean, discussion is. Discussion is discussion agreement.
Three years.
Ghosted that there was a vote or something.
Right.
I remember discussion, I don't remember.
I don't remember a vote or anything, yeah.
No, there, there was no, I don't recall any, any vote, I think there was just a discussion vote, because I clearly remember him talking about junkyard permits and his tires, and that's why he had that junkyard permit.
Yeah, because I was, I, I remember the discussion, because I was of the opinion that all of that other stuff ought to be just accessory use, and I got blown out of water on that, and I said, hey, that, holy cow, if you sell tires, you got to sell rims, if you sell rims, you got to sell some deer, but no, they came in different classes.
I mean, I remember the discussion, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm saying this, I don't remember. He didn't understand exactly what he wanted.
You were on the board through, yeah, I, well, don't worry, I'll sit down and talk to him, because I, I want to, I want to get the bottom of it. But you were on the board three years ago, right?
Well, yeah.
So.
If you only start three years, anything's a lot.
So, so we can go back, because that'll be a start date for us, this was when you were on, and that gives me a start date to start looking, or even a start date.
I'll do my best.
Thank you. I'm not sure there'll be much detail.
Yeah.
And we didn't.
And we don't do verbatim minutes, and that's something I want to remember, so if it was just a discussion that was had, it might mean something. So, if it was just a discussion that was had, it might mean somebody had to review videos or listen to audios.
We didn't have videos, Sam.
Yes, we did, we always have audio recorded, the message, I have cassette tapes in the town halls when we had audio.
We're not going?
We didn't video, but we audio.
That's why I was referring to video.
So, my point is that I just, I think it's starting, a date, or something to go by.
And I, and, and maybe a discussion with him, because I wasn't, because I wasn't clear if this was those kind of discussions three years ago, or when we started this process with, with the B one and B two, because he said that?
No, it wasn't this process.
It was, it was the fourth. You guys, DB one, DB two, you guys started that?
After he left.
After I left the board.
Yeah.
So, it was before that, and, you know, I don't know if it was a?
No, but I'm saying by his comments, that it was agreed that he wouldn't be in these zones, that would, I mean, that's kinda what I got, so, I, I just really asked him exactly what, maybe we can tie in a date.
Because the son-in-law was in here not too long, we're talking about the property, his property, and Dick's property, and, you know?
Well, part of the problem was also, he was, he was originally in the, in the R one, and he, and he got put into the B one. Well, no, the, the son-in-law, because the son-in-law has a residence out there, but he's in the BI.
Yeah.
And?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's, we'll try to understand what he wants, and make sure that we don't, you know, he doesn't get screwed over.
I, you know, what I, in talking to his son-in-law, what I, what I gleaned from it was that, I think back in two thousand seven, there was discussions about moving those lines, the R one line, the DB one, or the BI line, and the CCS line, but it didn't happen. Because we went over that, actually, today, using the zoning map, and he said, "Well, this is recent," I said, "No, this is recent, it's two thousand seven, this is a two thousand seven map," and he said, "Well, prior to this map, that's what was supposed to happen," so, it might have a long history back there, that, that, maybe promises were made that weren't done, I don't know. But I told him, as far as the son-in-law is concerned, I've already talked to him, and said, "In your situation, if you want, if you would, you wanna make, advocate that you replace," he's on board, he's in BI and, and R one, you wanna advocate going to B into R one, because you've got a residence there, you wanna, you know, cut it up for residence for your kids at some later date, certainly can make that pitch to the planning board, because they haven't gotten into the residential boundaries yet, which is what you'll be doing once the complaint committee re, reconvenes after town meeting, and that's what they're going to do, I've already talked to Donna, they're gonna reconvene, um, after the town meeting, and then they're gonna start working on the resident, the residential districts, the majority of the rest of the town, get that complaint thing done, so we can proceed on finishing this ordinance up, and get the new ordinance into its new format, and get it done.
And, and can you make sure on your, on your notes too, that you do capture getting that, the fire suppression and hydrants and proximity onto the new applications?
Right.
Because that's a great idea.
It is.
And I hate to lose that.
Well, Marty keeps bringing it up, and it should just, it should just be an item on the application, just to, just to bring it to the forefront, I think it's, I think it's?
I think it's excellent, I don't want to lose it.
And I don't even think that's some, that's something that, it's an administrative change to an application, so that, that's, we can just add it to the application, say like, locate the nearest?
Distance.
Show the distance, right.
I remember point blank, when I built my building, I had to prove and show how far I was away from the fire item. And that was in oh-two.
Well, I think it's a great thing to put on the, the application, makes a standardized question. Um, I think also, I, I couldn't find it in there, because it varies in that zone, but we still have that issue of what really amounts to conflicting sections of the zoning ordinance, or assuming the subdivision ordinance that require, require ISO sister standards, which is what still bang terrier, I had to do over most roads, I'm gonna drive.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's, that's a huge burden, Phil had to deal with it, actually, remember that? You had to deal with it too, because he's used to the turnpike, so, um, it's a, that's something that, that, you know, if you think you're just dealing with the zoning ordinance, you're not, you have to deal with that, and I've talked to the chief about Rich attacking his fire ordinance, because when Rich had started, started that fire ordinance?
He said he submitted it to the select.
So, he submitted it to the selectmen, and they, and basically, they kicked it over to the new fire chief, I believe, that's what you were doing here, and he hasn't had time to get it, he's gonna have to start. A while ago, six, eight months ago?
A year ago. A year ago? Oh, yeah.
Nicky and Dawson, who said that the fire chief would make the determination on fire suppression?
That's before you even, you were gonna do it after you hired the fire chief, you hadn't even hired a fire chief at the time.
So, maybe you never got? Okay, any other things, Mr. Planner? No, I think, I think you guys deserve a welcome, if you're gonna get a well-deserved press, you get two or three, and then get back. Motion for adjournment. Not yet. Vote. Any comments from the people up front? Mr. Labby, any comments?
Yep, the only comment I have tonight is, I think we have noticed, grass strip is a landscape item, grass is a landscape item, and your ordinance says shrubs, trees, or other landscape products.
Yeah.
Grass is a landscape product. I think you guys have the letter to, to let him do it.
Okay, you got any comments?
No, I'll say.
Okay, Tom? Motion to adjourn. Second? In favor? Good night.